Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. Before we begin our meeting, I'm just going to do just a couple of quick reminders. Number one, please take this moment to silence your cellphones at this time. If you are wishing to speak before the Planning Commission and you are not an applicant, then we do ask that you complete one of those forms that are located on the desk just outside of the council chambers. You will, the only people that will be calling on during those cases will be those who have completed that form, so please make sure you do so. Looks like we've got a few people signed up. We do ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. If you are here with a large group that's of neighbors that are sharing a similar concern, we do ask that you consider getting one person to speak on behalf of all the issues that the neighbors are having, and I promise I'll give that one person a little bit more time to speak so that we can make sure we fully heard you. If you are speaking and your neighbor is bringing up an issue, for example, if your neighbor is concerned about drainage and you're also concerned about drainage, we'd like you to limit any repetitious comments. So if we've heard about drainage as an issue and your neighbor already brought it up, you don't need to bring it up too. We just want to hear what your new and different concerns are from your neighbor. We just ask that you follow the golden rule. Treat us respectfully, treat each other respectfully, and respect the process. So with that having been said, we'll move forward with our agenda and to the receipt of the minutes from the February 8th, 2024 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve or move to receive the minutes of the February 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting?
Commissioner Clare moves to receive the minutes from the February 8th meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for continuance requests, and we'll begin with uncontested requests.
Item 24, case SPOUD 1598, deferred to March 14th. Item 25, SPOUD 1590, deferred to March 14th. Item 26, SPOUD 1588, deferred to March 14th. Item 27, case PC 10922, deferred to March 14th. Item 28, case PC 10898, deferred to March 28th. Item 29, case PC 10913, deferred to March 28th. Item 30, case PC 10919, deferred to March 28th. Item 31, case C 7410, deferred to June 13th. Item 32 has been withdrawn, and item 33 has been withdrawn.
Excellent. Was there anyone here that was planning on being heard on any of those items? Okay. With that, we're looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the uncontested continuance request as read.
Commissioner Clare moves to approve the uncontested continuance request as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're in line for new requests.
Item 12, case CE 1118, request to defer to March 14th. Item 22, case PC 10914, deferred to March 14th, and item 23, case C 7615, deferred to March 14th.
Excellent. Is there anyone here who wanted to be heard on any of those items? All right, we're looking for a motion.
I'll move to grant the new continuous request as read.
Commissioner Clare moves to grant the new continuance request as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. Bobby, did you vote?
Sorry.
And the motion passes. We're now in line for the consent docket.
Item 1 is case C 7625, final plat of Redstone Ranch, Phase 10, located north of West Britton Road and east of Piedmont Road. Item 2 is case C 7626, final plat of Copper Oak Estates, located north of East Wiltshire Boulevard and east of North Sooner Road.
Excellent. Is there anyone here wanting to be heard on any of those two items? All right.
I'll move to approve the consent docket as read.
Commissioner Clare moves to approve the consent docket as read. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for items requiring separate vote, and we'll begin with item 3.
This is case PUD 1382, SP 03, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1382, located at 16401 Ironstone Place.
Excellent. Is there an applicant present?
Commissioner, Councilman, my name is Phil Fitzgerald, the applicant. We've met all the requirements of the specific plan on 1382 and here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is in Ward 8. Commissioner Noble?
Thanks. This is for a specific plan for the dental depot, and I looked over the application. I see no problems with it.
Excellent. There's no one signed up to speak? Any questions from commissioners? All right, we're just looking for a motion. Fisher Noble?
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of PUD 1382, SP 03.
02? SP 0, is it 03 or 02?
Three.
Three, sorry. I think mine says 2. Commissioner Noble moves to approve the special permit 3 for PUD 1382. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Good luck. We're in line for item 4.
Item 4 is PUD 1486-SP 03, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1486, located at 2620 General Pershing Boulevard.
Excellent. Is there an applicant present?
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Harland. I represent the architecture firm applying for the specific plan on behalf of Aztec Charter Schools. I believe we have met all requirements of the specific plan, and we are going through permit process now with the city and addressing their comments. Welcome. Any questions you may have about this project?
When's this school going to be done, when you think?
We're hoping to be open for the fall semester of 2026.
Gotcha. Cool. Very cool. Commissioner Goveen? Do you have anything on this one?
No, I do not. Is this in Ward 6?
Yep.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make the motion. My apologies.
All good. All good.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of PUD 1486, SP 03.
Any questions from commissioners on this? Commissioner Goveen moves to approve of special permit 3 to PUD 1486. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck. We're in line for item 5.
This is SPOUD 1593, application to rezone 1841 Exchange Avenue from R1, C3, C4, and SRODD to SPOUD 1593.
Good afternoon. Dean Colletta, Civil and Environmental Consultants, 4700 Gilardia Parkway, representing the applicant. On this SPOUD, it's basically to support an addition of a existing building there for a lily field, which is a, they provide child services, family counseling, nonprofit organization. We did get Riverview Design Committee approval at the last meeting, and we've been working with the city staff and the planning group to, you know, kind of incorporate all the new parking standards for this, which is in the PUD document, and I think we'll, we pretty much have everything wrapped up, so if any questions, be happy to answer anything.
Cool. This is also in Ward 6. Commissioner Goveen?
Yes, I've met with the applicant, visited the site. It's 5,500 square foot addition, two stories. I did not see any concerns. Staff has proposed a TE of revision to include the permitted use of automotive parking lots as, just based on the parking requirement and parking being placed on site. I assume that's...
Yeah, that's been incorporated.
Been incorporated and good. The, I understand there's a separate alley vacation application, alley vacation process going on, so we're not approving that today.
Correct.
So that is a separate issue that may or may not be acceptable depending on how that plays out, so...
Yeah, and the alley vacation, if you pull up the site plan, you know, if for some reason that doesn't go through, the site plan in SPOUD, we can still meet all the requirements of that, so it doesn't, it's not going to affect that. But with that right-of-way being undeveloped all along through there, we still maintain the public utility easement where there is public utilities, so the use of it wouldn't really change, it's all access, it just would be a paved alley, and we'd have pavement for them now, but at the current condition, it's not paved throughout that whole area, so... But yeah, we'll come in with a separate application for the right-of-way vacation.
With that, I'm prepared to move approval. If there's no other comments or people signed up to speak on the item...
No one signed up to speak. Any questions from commissioners? I think we're ready.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of SPOUD 1593.
Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend a city council approval of SPOUD 1593. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes.
Appreciate it.
The motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 6.
Item 6 is SPOUD 1596, application to rezone 1624 Northwest 17th Street from R2 and UC.
Adam Landman, 718 West Sheridan, here on behalf of the applicant. So you saw this is a multifamily development. We've worked with the neighbors to get our setbacks and a lot of different things arranged. I think everybody is in agreement at this point. The sticking point, staff has asked for a TE of seven, or sorry, six units, and I think we still have seven inside the language. Essentially, the way we're looking at this, we've got 6.4 if you add up the site, that's what the calculation comes to. We're closing two curb cuts existing on the street. Basically, half the front yard is a parking lot right now. We're closing those up, re-landscaping that, putting in two new street trees. We're kind of counting that as our site since we're doing a lot of improvements on that. The math on that is over seven on, just in terms of the land use typology, if you extend to the street edge. The hope is that we can put two small studio units, kind of walkout units coming out of the project along 17th Street, adding two ground floor, more affordable type units up there. So we're really just wanting to split one of those six into two very small studio units. And I do have some language items that I'm going to have to read to you guys, but I'll let you answer any questions or comments that you have.
Do we want to hear, does staff have any comments on the unit count before we talk about that? Do you have a comment? Do you want to say anything about that? One way or the other? Because I'm inclined, just listening to it, to say that's fine, but Commissioner Goveen?
Well, I feel likewise, the difference on the six to seven, based on the parking metrics that are being provided, and the dwelling units per acre on a small site, infill site like this is less of a relevant...
For sure.
...discussion point. So I was prepared to support the seven unit option personally.
Yeah.
I think it's consistent with development, new developments that are currently either completed or under construction on this block, as well as the whole block to the west is full of sort of multi-unit, small infill apartment complex that have been there for a long time. So I think it's consistent with the typology in the area. I understand you made a number of mitigating measures with regard to roof pitch to sort of step down to the neighbor, to your east...
Yeah.
...as well as limiting the zero lot line wall area to the west.
Yeah.
Those have been incorporated, so I, we appreciate that. And there was a couple of items that I believe that have been noted, as will be addressed at the hearing, and not related to the administrative and professional office use and architecture to meet Gatewood UCD standards?
Yeah. Do you want me to read those? Okay. So essentially, in section 1, we'd like to remove the, or I'm sorry, the use, the 83001.1, no offices. Under architecture, we would like to change it from where it says porches to just a porch, one porch. And then on the parking, there's a note in the language that says to restore two street parking spaces directly adjacent to the property. We'd like to strike that entire line because there's no parking on that side of the street anyway, so we'd like to get rid of that, that line.
Okay.
So just the, right after it says curb, cut everything else.
Do you have that? Or do we need him to...
Well, I have the language, but I don't have the reference as to where the amendment in the MDS occurs. Obviously, it's under parking, so that would be...
Yeah, item 7, parking, north site boundary will be closed, and then everything after that we'd like to strike.
So eliminating 8300.1...
8300.
Making that amendment to section 7 regarding the parking, ending the sentence at the curbs along the north site boundary will be closed, period. And then what was the third? What am I missing?
The other one was under architecture, and it just, it says shall include a minimum of one balcony on upper floors and porches, and we just want to say and a porch with a depth of at least six feet.
Okay.
Okay. I will move to recommend approval of SPOUD 1596 with the three amendments to the MDS as read.
Yes, and just maybe we just...
These are not TEs.
Well, yeah, they're technically TEs since they're not already in...
Okay, so we need to add, I'll try to redo this. We need to add the following TEs. Number one, remove 8300.1 administrative and professional offices as a permitted use. TE2, in the architecture section, to meet Gatewood UCD standards, shall replace, to match surrounding residential architecture in the neighborhood. And TE number three, in the parking, section 7, after the word curb, remove the following words, to restore two street parking spaces directly adjacent to the property.
I think, so wait, on the architecture, we're in agreement on that? I thought it was to make it, say, a porch.
Oh, I'm, I'm...
One balcony on upper floors and a porch.
Yeah, I apologize. I left that part out. The second item in TE2 shall revise a minimum of one porch, sorry, revises the word porches to read a minimum of one porch.
There you go. And then we're eliminating TE1?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Then we're all in agreement about that. Okay. So Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend approval of SPOUD 1596 to city council, subject to the technical evaluations as read into the record, including the removal of technical evaluation number one. Is there a second? Commissioner Clare seconds the motion. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thanks.
Thank you. We're in line for item 7.
Item 7 is SPOUD 1599, application to rezone 2027 Northwest 16th Street from R1 and Gatewood UC.
Hi, everyone. I think we've already found the happy language with the staff to add a dwelling unit behind this existing house. There is no current structure back there, so if you want me to explain anything, I'm happy to do that, but I think you have the information in front of you.
Commissioner Goveen?
Sure. It's my, my section today, so it is.
Yes.
We're keeping you busy.
This is more or less in line with ADU proposed language, which is being reviewed in codes, so there's a number of these types of applications either have been our way or coming our way. I had a question on, typically the 24 feet would be the maximum height. I noticed this one requests 25 feet, so that's not a significant difference that I have a concern with, but I wanted to make sure we were clear on if there's a reason for that.
The reason we had, originally, we put 36 to meet the UCD, and staff advised us at 24 feet, but we have to meet a pitch, so we're within a couple of inches.
Yeah.
Based on where the center line was, we provided that information to the staff. So it's within a couple inches, so it was recommended actually by staff to put 25 just to be safe. We think we're 24, might be 24 and 2 inches.
Okay, yeah, so but that allows you to meet the Gatewood UCD pitch requirements.
So the first floor is 10 feet, second floor is 9 feet, and I think it was 21 feet, 11 inches to the midline. So again, I think we're pretty close...
Okay.
...on that slope, on the pitch.
I don't have a problem with 25 and move of...
Again, we're not trying to, we're not trying to take it at 25, but we just didn't want to get stuck on an inch or two.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Questions, comments, committee? I move to recommend approval of SPOUD 1599.
Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend a city council approval of SPOUD 1599. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
The motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 8.
This is SPOUD 1601, application to rezone 2821 Northwest 11th Street from R1.
Excuse me, the flu has hit our house. I'm standing in for Kelly Robinson. He is wanting, in the process of taking the detached garage and rezoning it and turning it into a one-bedroom apartment, and so he asked that I stand in for him today.
And we could get your name and address for the record?
My name is Angie Maddox, 9635 Oak Pond Drive, Luther, Oklahoma, 73054.
Excellent. Commissioner Goveen?
Sure. So this is an existing detached garage?
Yes.
And so the, the structure is proposed to remain...
Yes.
...and be converted into one...
Yes, sir.
...apartment. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I mean, I've looked through the, the MDS. I mean, they comply with, again, the ADU. This is another ADU, so I don't have an issue with it. Is anyone else? There was a note on, I don't think this is an issue, but two parking spots must be provided. Presumably, the driveway provides those spaces.
Yes, sir. He is aware of that. He has extended the parking lot already, and he's willing to extend however much more you guys need.
Okay, yep. Any questions, comments from other commissioners?
Nope.
I will move to recommend to council approval of SPOUD 1601.
Commissioner Goveen moves to recommend city council approval of SPOUD 1601. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We're in line for item 9.
Item 9 is SPOUD 1603, application to rezone 3023 South Kleagurn Avenue from R1.
How you doing?
Good. How are you doing? Please, tell us about your project. Well, give us your name and address for the record, then tell us about your project.
Andrew Nelson, 13408 Old Iron Road, Edmond, Oklahoma, 73013. I bought this property, investment property. It already existed, both buildings, there's a duplex in front and an ADU in back. Whenever I went to get, you know, some financing for it with the bank, they requested that I change the zoning because it's currently R1. I'm not really changing anything, I'm just rehabbing the existing, but just to appease them so I can get basically on the appraisal credit for all the square footage, just wanting to get it changed to this.
Gotcha. Commissioner Goveen?
Yes. Another ADU project, and this one being existing is also pretty straightforward as far as I'm concerned. It looks like you comply with all the, you know, the staff requests and ADU requirements. The two meets density ranges, et cetera, et cetera. The question on alley improvements and four parking spots, so I just, it appears that you can accommodate the four parking spaces.
Yes.
Is there any plan to do alley improvements, or is that not necessary?
It, the alley is very usable. Our construction team has driven that, and that's what they use to get access to the, whenever they clean out the back ADU. So I don't know that it needs anything, but I'm, you know...
Okay. Well, I guess the, the TEs that staff have noted, I just want to make sure we address one way or the other to agree that they're okay, it's okay to or not to do that. It was, number two is the site plan shows only one access point from South Kleagurn Avenue. If proposed access to the spud, if proposed as access to the spud, the existing alleyway must be improved in accordance with the City of Oklahoma City paving standards.
Sure.
So I think what you're saying is you're not proposing to take access from the alley permanently.
It would make sense for the ADU to have access from the alley, so I would be happy to, you know, pave that or whatever's necessary for them to pull into, whoever's living at the ADU to have, you know, parking space right there next to it from the alleyway.
Okay, well, if you're okay with that as, as worded, we'll...
Yeah, I was actually planning on that, so I didn't know. Yeah, that's great.
I have a question for staff as regarding that comment. Like, what are, what are the extents of the alley improvements?
That's it, because the wording to me sounds broader.
That's mid-block, so...
Yeah.
You know, is the request to pave, you know, we want to make sure we clarify this for your benefit.
Sure.
Is the request, you know, improve the alley from, what is it, Southwest 29th all the way to the property, so that, I mean, that's a few hundred feet, so...
That's why I wanted to...
Berry Lodge Public Works. It would be my intent on that, that they wouldn't have to improve the entire alleyway just from one end to...
The length of the property?
There, through the, well, they're, they're going to have to provide, start out a street...
Okay.
...and go across their property. They wouldn't have to do the entire alleyway from street to street, but they would have to have that improved access from the public street across the extent of the developed property.
And that's consistent with what the city's paving standards say? Is that it's only his width of, of the alleyway that he'd be required to pave? I'm just trying to, okay...
It would be the 20-foot alleyway, which is the, that should be the, the standard or what's platted, and that is the standard paving section for the, for the alleyway. Did that make sense?
The whole thing?
But just so the applicant understands, you have to pave from 29th Street, which is the shortest distance, to your property line, your far property line.
It's currently got a great drive. Like, it's cleared, people use it regularly, so like, I feel like that might be slight overkill to have to like completely repave it.
It may seem like overkill, but that's... It may seem like overkill, but that's what would be required by the standard, and we've had this question come up numerous times over the past few months about being, about having to pave an alleyway, or can it be done with gravel, can it be done with whatever? And since it is a public improvement, that's kind of the way it goes with all development, that the developers that are going in are required to extend those improvements. And so that's kind of going to be the stance of where we're having to go with this. Otherwise, this is, we're going to snowball into, again, setting precedent on what can be allowed and what is going to be required. And if we don't continue to require that, then it's, this is going to blossom into something that's completely out of control, where we've got gravel alleyways, and we've got part of it paved, and we've got another part of it that's not. And so that's kind of where this is coming from. If this is public street, which it's going to have to meet the, I mean, it falls into the same category, even though the level of construction that's required is different. It is a, it's a public access way.
So.
And as such, it would need to be done that way.
Yeah, just, so I'm looking at it on Google Street. So it's asphalt, and it's somewhat in good condition, but yeah, there's cracking and family, so is the standard concrete?
Yes.
That's extremely, I mean, I understand why it's in the city's interest to require this. It seems like a really unfair outcome for an applicant that is only requesting this for the sake of the bank needing clarity. It's not like he needed the rezoning to occupy any of these units.
Yeah, they've been occupied all along.
Yeah.
I'm not adding any additional ADU.
My suggestion to the applicant would, I think the key word here is if proposed as access to this spud, the existing alleyway must be improved. I do not believe you require access from the alleyway for this spud.
And I was going to mention too, the ADU in the back is a three-car garage with living quarters above, so like, there's places, like, they've got the driveway to pull in and park in the garage.
That's what I mean. You can accommodate the necessary parking spaces on your site, and you have enough paved area as shown for vehicles to maneuver and get in and out of your site without officially taking access from the alley.
Sure.
So you're saying we can just get by that by just saying he's just not going to take access from them?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think if in permitting, you need to pull that concrete off the alley, the little drive that goes north, so that you're not taking access, I think you can probably do that. But that TE can remain for the record, but I would suggest if you want to avoid that cost of improving the alley, you don't take that access.
Sure.
Would that, the way we just described it, is not going to lead to any future trouble with permitting? He can just say, I'm not taking access?
That would technically meet the letter of the law. If he's not taking access from that, then that's what we were looking at, is that if that's where the access is going to come from, then the improvement would be required.
All right. Sounds like, sounds like an opportunity for some ordinance reform, but, but okay.
Particularly if the alley's already usable and has some level of paving, it seems unfair to make someone.
One person.
Repay half a block of 20-foot wide alley. So anyways, just trying to help you as you.
No, I appreciate that for sure.
Move forward into permitting. So the TE1 was amended sidewalk section to read existing only, so it's just making sure that all reconstructed and existing sidewalks shall be provided in accordance with City of OKC standards and MEADA, so you're okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm going to recommend approval of SPUD 1603, including TE number one and two as written in the record.
Commissioner Gauvain moves to recommend a City Council approval of SPUD 1603, subject to the two technical evaluations as written into the record, or, excuse me, in the staff report. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thanks, guys.
We're in line for item 10.
Item 10 is SPUD 1600, application to rezone 4310 South Shields Boulevard from SPUD 39, SPUD 433, and R2.
William Solins, 600 Northwest 23rd Street, representing the applicant. This is really a tiny bit of cleanup, plus adding some uses to this existing spud. The ones that we're adding, fast food, beverage sales, as well as a eating establishment, drive-through. The other adjustments to this spud, modifying the accessory sign height to 12 feet. And then everything else, I believe that we have met at this point.
So you want to change the sign height to 12 feet, is what you're saying?
Correct, from eight feet to 12 feet.
And did you see the TE regarding the drive-through call boxes being 100 feet from the nearest residence?
That is concerning, and took a look at that. Right now, we are currently planned where you see that adjacent to the curb, that is 81 and a half feet. Looking across the street to the south to the McDonald's is actually closer to the existing residential, and also facing the existing residential to the south of us. And we are actually facing directly south towards the street.
So you're facing, you're facing 43rd?
Yes.
And you're saying the McDonald's across the street?
Is actually angling back towards the residential.
Gotcha.
And it's closer than 100 feet.
So you can't get, so how close is the call box to the neighbors?
Our call box is 81 and a half.
81 and a half. Okay. And that's the intended use? We're doing all of this so you can have open what?
I'm sorry?
What are you, what are you, what's the ultimate plan here?
It's a drive-through walk-up Dunkin'.
Gotcha. All right, this is in, this is in Ward four.
Yeah.
And we don't have Commissioner approve it. Any thoughts on this? I'm concerned about the proximity.
So did I hear, make sure I understood you, your call box, it's proposed to orient south toward McDonald's?
Correct.
And not toward the residential?
Correct.
And it's still 81 feet from there?
I'm, I would be fine if you just, if we altered the TE, the call boxes should orient toward southeast 43rd and away from residential, since we can't hit the 100 feet.
Yeah.
Still put a number, though.
Yeah.
Just so.
80 feet.
There'll be no less than 80 and face to the south.
Can you deal with that? Any other thoughts from commissioners?
I don't know about the sign height, if that's been.
Yeah. What do the other signs look like on that street?
There is a monument sign directly north of where we're proposing this project. It's a typical monument sign, approximately probably eight foot long, four to five feet high. Typically, the spud says eight foot max, with maximum of 100 square feet per side.
It's a monument sign, that's better than a pole sign. That was the max? Well, now you're saying eight max?
No, the existing was like, we're asking for 12.
You're asking for 12.
But at 100 square foot, we're not changing the 100 square foot. That this, the pylon sign that we're looking at, this is, and it's still ground mounted, it's not, no pole signs. It's approximately two to three feet in width, 16 inches deep and 12 foot high.
Okay.
So you're saying same area, just stretched a bit?
Stretching it back.
Visibility's better.
Yeah, I mean.
Thoughts, commissioners? This side of the horseshoe's good with it?
If it's still 100 square feet max, I mean, that feels better.
I mean, that ONQ is fairly new, and it looks like they've got 15, 20-foot signs.
Oh, okay. Okay. Then I think we're just looking for a motion with the amended TE language.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend to City Council approval of SPUD 1600, subject to technical evaluation one, amending that all drive-through call boxes shall be at least 80 feet from residential zoning district and orient toward southeast 43rd. And TE2, the maximum sign height should be 12 feet.
Excellent. Commissioner Claire moves to recommend to City Council approval of SPUD 1600, subject to the amended technical evaluation one and the addition of technical evaluation two as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Good luck. You're in line for item 11.
Item 11 is SP 584, application for a special permit to operate emergency shelters and feeding sites in the DBD and HL districts located at 127 Northwest 7th Street.
Excellent.
Good afternoon. My name is the Very Reverend Katie Churchwell. I'm the dean of St. Paul's Episcopal Cathedral. That is fancy Episcopal talk for senior pastor. I'm joined here today with colleagues of mine, members of our staff clergy and our governing board, and in brief, our request for a special permit is to provide temporary shelter when weather temperatures reach exceptionally dangerous levels. It's to save lives. This is done in partnership with a broad spectrum of community partners, including, but not limited to Oklahoma City Police Department, our local hospitals downtown, City Care and Homeless Alliance, which provides services to the unhoused on a regular basis, YMCA Downtown, and with OKN Homelessness, a nonprofit that does all case management while we have guests with us during inclement weather. We've had three shelters in the past two winters, and we've had an overwhelmingly positive experience having guests stay with us. We've also been able to have a complete return to sort of typical life for us at the cathedral when they leave. Many of our guests move on to permanent or temporary housing. Many in that brief period of time receive access to services that they had not yet been able to access, and mostly they receive care and an opportunity to truly rest for just a small period of time. This April, the cathedral will celebrate 120 years on the corner of 7th and Robinson, and I feel very confident standing before you all today as a leader of a business and a faith community, as someone who is utterly dedicated to our small piece of Oklahoma City, and the mutual thriving that we have for all people who call, you know, that, I think 300 was the number there, around our cathedral. We have been committed since our inception to loving our neighbor as ourselves, as Jesus commands us to do, and part of that includes being good community members and faithful partners to the residents who call the neighborhood around us home, business owners who call the neighborhood around us home, as well as to the people who call the street home. We very firmly and solidly believe that no one deserves to freeze to death. So we are committed to mutual thriving, and we believe that the approval of this special permit allows us to do our small part in impacting our city. Homelessness is in fact a very big, big, big problem, and I think that if everyone does their little piece, of which we believe this is ours, then we get to impact the lives of many and allow for service providers to do the service that they do, and for us to do what it is that we can do in providing temporary, short-term shelter during those inclement weather days. Thank you.
Thank you, and certainly appreciate the cause and the effort, and certainly we want to be supportive of that. I think I can speak for all of us with that. I do have just a couple of questions, just to clarify. Your shelter, the shelter would only be utilized if it's three consecutive days?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we get, you know, the weather report, and it says it looks like there will be at least three consecutive days where the high is below freezing, we go then into action, and we're not, we're not a shelter. We have people up in our fellowship hall, you know, they're on mats, and so this is not a permanent setup. It's really, it's really when it's a life or death matter for people to be outside.
And so, and that makes sense, just wanted to clarify that. And then your neighbors have written us a number of letters, they're very concerned. It sounds to me, and I don't, we don't have any of them here signed up to speak, but it sounds to me like the concern is that at the conclusion of those cold days, when they are no longer, when the participants are no longer using your facility, that there is a concern about them loitering and remaining in the area. Could you tell us a little bit about the efforts that you all have made and intend to make in order to mitigate that concern?
Absolutely. So I respectfully submit some packets of here, which there should be enough for everyone. Thank you so much. It includes the letters that we at the cathedral have mailed and hand-delivered to every address that we were given to reach out to. It includes an invitation to come to a community meeting to be able to really foster further communication and participation. And yesterday afternoon, we had a really wonderful gathering in the same place where we have the shelter, where we heard from both business owners, from developers, and then from our neighbors at the memorial about how they see this as a positive benefit. What I can absolutely tell you is that people who are unhoused are people, and so when they leave our facility, they have the same access and rights that housed people have to be on public property and to do things like that. We, at our last shelter, made sure that every single person had a place to go, and they got there. This included buying four bus tickets, three for people who found permanent housing with family in Tulsa. That was their barrier to permanent housing, a bus ticket. One bus ticket to Las Vegas, and then one for a victim of domestic violence who unfortunately her abuser knew of all of the domestic violence shelters here in Oklahoma City, and so she was sent to another shelter further outside of the city. Also, five individuals, including a family, a dad with three boys, all went into, into living in a house together and are being case managed into permanent housing. And then for our other guests who either went back to, say, the day shelter at Homeless Alliance when our shelter closed down, every single person was given a ride to where it is that they indicated that they wanted to go. So I can tell you, at the shelter that we most recently had, it wasn't a kick open the doors and a see you later, good luck. It's a genuine caring and compassion that extends beyond, you know, when the temperatures rise, and is really geared toward helping people get to where they need to be to be successful. With that said, I completely understand the concerns. We're an urban area, we understand that, and perhaps more than others, as a faith community, we receive lots of cries for assistance, and people who come and ask for help, and people who stay in our, in our, who want to come and stay in our space. The city has done a remarkable job in continuing to strengthen infrastructure, including community outreach team, and being, this temporary shelter has really helped us to become more deeply connected with people who can do real help. So we're a church, we're not a, you know, we don't, we're not social workers, and that's not our gift, but we are connectors. And so while I hear that concern, I also heard concern from other business owners who say, you know, I'm so glad that you're opening up because that means someone's not going to break into my store to stay warm. And from our neighbors at the memorial who said, we're really glad that you have that space because we've seen less people trying to get into our public bathrooms, which are climate-controlled, trying to stay, to stay there. So, you know, while we've had these community meetings, we're, continue to be committed to having a good, healthy, mutually thriving relationship with people who don't have the same philosophy as us, and that's, and that's really okay. We just see honestly very minimal impact, and so with the past three shelters that we've had, I don't see those concerns. They have yet to realize is, is from my perspective.
Commissioner Gauvain?
Sure.
Sure. Thank you, Dean Churchwell, for all the information. Appreciate that. I've reviewed all the, you know, the protest letters carefully, as well as met with the applicant and their colleagues. In, in my view, on this case, it's, it's a no-brainer, and I'm in support of it. I don't think it's, I, I can't understand how not providing a warm place for people to sleep in emergency situations, which are a fairly rare occasion here, even in the winter. You know, we do get some very cold spells, but this is not a, a problem that's going to be there and be present on a, on a regular basis by any means in the neighborhood. So, I, I think it's a good thing. The church is working with partner agencies that know this population. They know who they're serving. They know where they are. They know the numbers. And they have other resources and services for those people to assist them and potentially even help get them off the street. So, I'm in support and welcome any other comments or questions from, from others.
Any questions, commissioners?
I, I have a quick one. Is your, is the facility protected by a fire sprinkler or just a fire alarm?
No, fire sprinklers.
Okay. I would, obviously, the fire department had, didn't have any notes regarding this special permit, but there is a process for that. You'd want to check with them. Anytime you turn a building like that without a fire sprinkler into a dormitory, there's a special application that you have to notify them. And I would just recommend you follow, follow up on that with the fire department.
A couple of comments. You would operate 24 hours a day while it was operating?
We do.
Right. So, you wouldn't, at 7:00 AM, send them out and then let them back in at 4:00 or whatever?
No.
So, it's a 24-hour operation? And then, another one is, when you were operating, you, you, have you operated this?
We've had three over the past two winters.
Okay. Did you reach capacity?
No, we didn't. So, you know, there's what we could, you know, hold. And if there was ever an emergency, like, say, the 300-bed facility at Homeless Alliance lost power or something like that, we could take up to 70. But sort of the sweet spot for us is about 40 people. And that allows for, you know, people to be able to be human and have space and, and to not be so full that it's, that it's beyond uncomfortable.
One thing I wanted to add, having visited the church, is it's, it's a beautiful historic building and has a number of court, internal courtyards. So, they're able to serve people well and not have, you know, queues of people kind of parked on the sidewalk and out in the main public right-of-way. So, they're able to welcome people into the courtyard to muster and check in, which, which is, seems well-suited to this purpose.
We also have a, what we call our East Garden, which allows for people, if they're bringing belongings with them, to have their belongings be also on our property. We have a number of safety measures in place in order to protect both our guests, as well as staff and volunteers. And I'll just, would love to close by saying, I would love, in the future, for us to have zero need to ever utilize this special permit. And beyond operating a temporary shelter, we're also doing work with the city, with other community partners, to engage in homelessness in other avenues as well, because, you know, we see this as a need. And when it's not a need, or should it ever become not a need, we are really happy to not serve as a temporary shelter.
Any other questions?
One other thing, I believe a special permit is, becomes attached to the property and not the owner, right? And it's, it's forever?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department, a special permit expires if the use is not used within one year. Otherwise, it's perpetual.
Okay. Okay. It's good to know.
If there are no other comments and no one signed up to speak, I would take pleasure in recommending approval of SP 584.
Commissioner Gauvain moves to recommend approval of SP 584 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Clare. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
We're in line for item 13.
Item 13 is KCPA 2023-5, consideration of a proposed map amendment to the Conference of Plan, changing the land use topology area from AP to UL, based designation on a 63A parcel, acre parcel located on the northeast corner of Southwest 149th Street and South Portland Avenue.
So, I know, I know we did hear this case already, Baneri, so maybe just hit us with the highlight concerns so that we can, because I think we watched a video. I think we saw all kinds of stuff the last time. So, if we could just get to the, the core of your concerns.
So, Baneri Mihicortis, Planning Department, like the president mentioned, we did already went through this case, so I'm going to go through it a little fast. So, this is the first time we have received a CPA for a site going from rural low to urban low. Just to give you a heads up, that's where the subject site is located at. The land use is undeveloped right now. The 16 condition, in terms of the zoning, is zone agricultural. In terms of the land use, I, I'm going to stop here one minute. And the main reason is because, one of the arguments is that everything surrounding this site is urban low, but this site in a specific is rural low. So, continue. In terms of city services, the site has water, it has sewer. And in terms of emergency services, it does respond to urban, responds time for fire and emergency services. But why this site in a specific was categorized as urban, as rural low? So, mainly, it's because of the environmental-sensitive areas. This site is 100% located within the riparian area, and it's located 100% within a flood zone. Like you can see there, it's not only the site itself, it's almost everything to the south, to the site. You can, the next one. So, here is the, the flood zone. Within the site itself, we have a floodway, and then it's surrounded by what we call a part of the flood zone. This is a, a couple of pictures. These were taken by the police and fire department here. This was when, it was rain past year, July 9th, and where the whole area flooded. I'm not going to post the video again, if you want to watch it, but I think we watched it last time. You can go ahead. This is from our Public Works. This was provided from the drainage department. Just to highlight here, the buildings that are like in a burgundy colors are areas that have experienced some flooding. So, we can, and I like to bring this up because even though we have areas that even are outside of what we call the flood zone that have experienced flooding, so that means that these flood zones have moved a little bit. Just to give you a heads up, our flood zones maps are a little old. I just, I was just told that we're in the process of updating them, the 2020 flood zone maps, and there might be some changes with this. So, we're working on that.
Just, just to clarify on that last exhibit, there are no structures north of 156 that have experienced, that have reported flooding, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, the site is all the way up there. Yeah. So, this is basically the site. Basically, we didn't talk too much about this the last time a little bit, but in terms of agricultural preserve, and one of the reasons why we have an agriculture preserve, that you see to the north, those are called, used to be called the Dust Bowl terraces, is because at one point in our history during the Dust Bowl, that was one of the, the remedies that were used by the federal government to protect our agricultural soils, is the soils that were considered rich or very good agricultural soils. They prepared these terraces to prevent erosion. So, there's another example that this site should be preserved for agricultural purposes too, because it's highly evaluated. It's always been very important for agriculture purposes. This is the street. This is Portland Avenue. For us to call something urban low, should have urban low services, should be urban low standards, Portland Avenue, sadly, on that site is not up to urban standards. So, for these reasons, we recommend a deny to this application. I don't know if you have any questions?
My, I think my question, and it might not be, I might have to pick on Barry. I think my question's about mitigation and the extent to which, I mean, I guess we're, I guess that we could deal with that in the zoning. But, any questions, commissioners? On the CPA? Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Mark Zetzel with Johnson &amp; Associates, address is 1 Sheridan, Sheridan Avenue. I'm not going to go back through the PowerPoint that I went through last time, but if we could back up to the map that showed drainage complaints, one of the main things that was brought up was none of those complaints were in the immediate vicinity and north of 149th. Also, of the buildings that were flooded, they exist within the 100-year floodplain. And I think it's important to note that at the time of development, our site will no longer be in the floodplain, based on the work that we will do. We hear, I think, every two weeks, residents show up with concerns about drainage during the zoning phase. We're not even at the zoning phase, and we're talking about the drainage. What you typically don't see is Phase 3, 4, 5, 6 of subdivisions when those neighbors come back, and they, they're no longer complaining about flooding because the engineering techniques that were designed and engineered stamped and is liable for, and then Barry's department has reviewed, approved, they constructed and inspected, are working, which is why you do not see the flood of residents at the plating stage showing up in the later phases of development, saying that they've been flooded out because those worst concerns do not happen. It's not to say that no one has ever experienced flooding, but when you look at that map, even the structures that are south of 149th closer to our site was a drainage complaint, but they did not flood. So, most of the time that we spent at the last meeting was talking about this process. And I'll ask Barry to confirm this, but this is a stage in the process at which we're seeking to understand what level of diven, of density are we permitted to have. In order to do that, we have to go through the comp plan amendment process because our site was determined to be prime farmland because of the Dust Bowl, but no other properties north of 150th were. So, that is what it is. But we're going to meet all of the federal, city, and state regulations to modify the floodplain consistent with the rules. And so, these are random smatterings of aerials throughout Oklahoma City. And everything in purple, those notes, are map revisions that have been approved in Oklahoma City. So, this is an area up around Lake Hefner. There's hundreds on this map. If we look at an area southwest 134th and May, hundreds in this area. And I can go, I'm happy to walk you through the dozen or so aerials that I've brought. The intent here is to show, you can do this. It has been done. Barry's office reviews all of it, and we're permitted to do this. So, whether this is approved today or it's denied, the applicant and the property owner have a right, and Barry, I'll ask Barry to actually confirm this, we can go out, construct a pond, raise the elevation of the property, file a map revision with FEMA, remove it from the floodplain, have the map reflect that, refile this application. And I'm not sure there's a basis for denial, because when they do their analysis for the comp plan, what it's going to show is we're no longer in the floodplain. So, I don't know at that point what reason they would have for denial. The planning department is using the drainage as a reason to deny a case, which I don't know that I've seen before, when Public Works is saying, "We're allowed to do this if we meet all of their requirements." That's our struggle, and that's the, that's the issue we're having, is trying to figure out, how do we even get to talk about density when we can't even figure out how to get to the plating stage to determine how we can realistically approach the drainage in the area? So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but Okana, Wheeler, Lone Oak up at 150th and Portland, they all modified the floodplain, in some cases, modified the floodway to do development, all in accordance with the standards that the city has adopted. Short of the city council changing the regulations, we're doing everything by the book how we're supposed to be doing it.
Okay. And I, I think it's important for the framing of this issue to understand, again, we're, we're talking about the appropriateness of an amendment to the comp plan. So, I guess we're not even really into the, into the engineering at this point. We're just into the, is it appropriate? Does it make sense to change? I think my question for staff is, I'd love to hear your response to, to Mark's comments. And, and I'd also love to hear your thoughts on, so is it really about, because I'm, it sounds like we're going to receive evidence that the flood, flooding issues can be mitigated. So, let's assume that that's true. So, the issue then becomes, is it the streets and the fact that we want to have more agricultural preserve? Like, what are the other factors that we should be considering, assuming that, that the floodplain issue could be mitigated? And, and is it even reasonable in the first place for the floodplain to even be able to be mitigated? I might, that might be a false premise.
So, the, the prime farmland is not necessarily the issue. The issue is, and I wouldn't call it drainage, I would call it, this is an environmental issue and a flooding issue, a floodplain issue. So, the Conference of Plan says that when we have situations like this, we should not modify the floodplain. And that's, that's an environmental issue, and of course, that's related to drainage and the, the flow of water through and off the site. I think we heard last time that, yes, we can engineer our way out of this. We can certainly bring in Phil. We can do, we can, we can do a lot of engineering, and, and that's done quite a bit in the city. We, I can't remember a time where we've had an entire site covered by the floodplain. And that's why this is, this is a bit unique. We often have cases where there will be a certain portion that's, that's floodplain, and other portions are developable, and there's encroachment a little bit. But this is one where the entire site is floodplain, and it's a very large floodplain. It is on the, the northern extent of this very large floodplain area. So, it, it is about the Conference of Plan policy that just says, you shouldn't, you should avoid modifying the floodplain. And the reason is because that has historically been where the water goes, and there is some risk from, from the flooding perspective. If you are modifying that, filling it, modifying it in other ways, providing, you know, drainage structures, ponds, and so forth, there is some risk that it's going to affect other folks. There is some risk that, that that could happen. And so, the safest thing to do would just be to leave it. But that doesn't mean you can't do, you can't engineer a solution. There's no denying that, and that's correct, that if, if they were to go through the process and this were no longer in the floodplain, it would, you know, we wouldn't be saying this.
That's fair.
We do have several people signed up to speak. Do we want to hear from our, our neighbors first?
Chairman, if I, if I may, the comment that we have not seen sites 100% in the floodplain, Mackinac Island, North Oklahoma City, this was actually the floodway, not the floodplain. Went through the proper permitting with the city and with FEMA. It was removed. There's now a neighborhood there today. The Wheeler District, also entirely within the floodplain, exists, has been approved. We have Fusion Industrial Park, Northeast Oklahoma City Ward 7. The vast majority of their site, you can now see buildings in it, was 100-year floodway or floodplain. Additionally, there was floodway. Study was done to remove it. And then, the Lone Oak Development at 150th near Portland was also flood, floodway and floodplain. This was maybe one of the more intrusive ones, where they modified the floodplain for a detention pond, and then still developed in the floodplain. So, this has happened, and these aren't historic examples, these are projects that are under development today. So, we're not seeking to do something that's out of the norm for Public Works to review. I think this is an important part. These are still under development today and are still submitting the proper permitting requirements through the Public Works Department.
Oh, I stand corrected. There, there are, and I do remember some of those. There's a handful of examples where that has happened. And, but what the plan was trying to say is that's not the ideal scenario. The best way to handle these is... not the ideal scenario, the best way to handle these is to not allow development in the floodplain. What I, my intention was to say typically, we have a subdivision that's coming through, and, you know, we're, staff is saying, hey, let's avoid developing in this portion of it that is in the floodplain. It's unusual for this kind of situation to occur, and yes, I do recall some of those, but that's not the ideal situation where you just, you alter the floodplain and that, kind of that large of a scale.
And then the last thing I'll add, just before the neighbors speak, I think what Mr. Butler had said, in terms of the approval of this, instead of seeking the density and intensity we were allowed first, which we believe is the more transparent process to go through, we still have the option to go do exactly what we're seeking to do and come back before you, and what he said was, we would not be having this conversation today because the site would no longer be floodplain, which means they'd be recommending approval. So there's a lengthy discussion about this, but the reality is, what the comp plan is trying to prevent is already permitted, it's an existing entitlement that we have. We're simply seeking to understand whether we can build single-family or duplex homes here, that's it.
And can't do it without the comp plan amendment? Gotcha.
Well, if making the comp plan amendment would be so easy, I mean...
I guess, why aren't you doing what you suggested you could do then? Is it, I think I know the answer, cost?
There's a significant cost in terms of doing it, and we'd like to have a better understanding of what our future development plan will be. It helps us design to what we need to do. If we go through the full engineering process for, let's say it was duplexes, it's going to be a different pond design, it's going to be a different set of engineering documents to then go get approved, to come through with entitlements, and the commission and the council say, well, I'm not comfortable with duplexes, maybe single-family, or maybe a modified version of a single-family. We can't get to that point, so it's not just that it's the cost, it's that it's the uncertainty after the engineering would have already been done.
Yeah, I understand, okay. You want to hear from our neighbors first? All right, first we have Nick Aquino, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, please forgive me.
Mr. Butler, are you...
Gotcha, thank you. Scott, Scott, I am so sorry.
(inaudible).
I'm going to have to do my best on that one.
I'll be real brief. My only concern, basic concern, is that 149th Street...
Well, Scott, please give us your name and address for the record, and yeah...
Scott Aquino, 4140 Southwest 149th is our business, and my concern is that 149th Street, any heavy amount of rain, decent rain, that whole street floods and is blocked off, or you have to have a high SUV to try to make it through. Portland is horrible, so my concern would be, some improvements have to be done to 149th Street and the drainage all the way down to Interstate 44, and then the Portland area. Like I said, it's not even passable, it's something that potholes, so it's really not even a real road, really. The only people that go travel down there, people are on their couches, so that's my concern.
So your objection is not to the comp plan amendment, it's just...
Well, my concern is, they could build that up, but then where's that water going to go? I don't think you can build a big enough pond. It's going to go south of 149th Street, and there's property owners there, and there's other businesses and houses along 149th Street, which is already, you know, it needs to be four land anyway right now, because to get to Norman, there's only Highway Nine and 149th are the two most accessible areas, so that's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Next we have Jason McClurey.
Hi, my name's Jason McClurg, I've, pardon me, I've been an owner of property on 149th and Bojangles, and property all down there since 1994. So I've witnessed almost, you know, just right at 30 years of this flooding historic that actually happens. To kind of reiterate on the height building, all that does is divert, as Mr. Butler would said, it just diverts that water more to southwesterly pattern, which it doesn't, it doesn't hold anyway, and some of the buildings that we own on five acre tracts on Bojangles grandfathered in, and we're within inches, we've been flooded, and without even this type of development going into place. You push that dynamic of 63 acres, yes, he can build and do everything he wants, but that water still is directional, and it's going to come to the southwest I-44 corridor. So with that being said, I just have some notes I'd like to read. Application for the CPA should achieve the required policies. I think number one, this doesn't improve the functionality or quality of the surrounding area per recommendations for property owners and business owners like Mr. Aquino and myself. Excuse me, the entire site is designated agriculture preserve and is due to the entire site in floodplain with the worst type V clay soil. I mean, soil conditions in that area where they're proposed, it's horrible, horrible soil. Example, it causes ground to heave, damage to all infrastructure. That's probably one reason why Portland's never had permanent infrastructure is because you can't, you can't hold it. I mean, if you've ever witnessed it coming down through there, it's like, I don't know if you guys have ever whitewater rafted, but it's class V rapids coming through there. I mean, people have stalled out at that Portland 149th intersection, and, you know, it's a bad deal, much less, I know they were wanting to have access as one of their exits out of their addition there. Well, they're not going to be able to get out, so, from the flooding, just because of the gravel. Raising the site will lead to surrounding area flooding. I mentioned the buildings that I have currently, they're within inches, so any other development in that area will cause havoc on us as business owners and taxpayers, and it just wouldn't be good. Then the last thing on that particular subject would be loss of property values. We start flooding out our buildings, and our tenants, or whoever we lease our buildings to, you know, they don't, now, we're losing, we're losing that side of it. Let's see. And then the main thing is, once I start flooding there, I'm trapped, and my property values down there are pretty good right now. Things, the bars came up, and, but it's only going to take the water to kill it, because we're not, it's going to be unsellable. And I don't think any amount of engineering, well, I shouldn't say that, but it's going to take a lot to be able to redirect that water because it is so flat. Per city of Oklahoma City staff report, no capital improvements to roads in this area, so what I've seen is, East of May has proposed improvements on the docket in the future, but everything from May back to I-44 is, there's nothing, there's nothing, you know, that's, I think there's a resurface scheduled, which they did that a couple of years ago, and then once all this water starts moving around, it just eats, it just deteriorates anyway. Compound 300 more duplexes and all that traffic load, you know, when there's that much water and erosion, that much more traffic, it just deteriorates the whole site, so, on the roadside, and everything. I mean, it's pretty amazing, and the only reason why I can say that is because I've been there 30 years. I mean, I can witness that, truly. Environmental, you know, that 63 acres is deemed environmental sensitive area, which is a riparian area. The entire 63-acre site is a riparian area. Riparian areas are vegetated areas adjacent to streams, lakes, ponds, and wetlands, which that's what this is, composed of trees, shrubs, grasses, and preserving a riparian area is essential to maintain habitat preservation and connectivity, short and long-term water quality and stormwater management, flood and erosion control, which obviously our flood and erosion control is a pretty, a pretty big hit here. And then the flood zone. The flood zone not only affects the site, but access roads to Southwest 149th Street in Portland are recognized as some of the areas where the city frequently works on flooding issues. Paul Bronson, Assistant Director of the Oklahoma City Public Works Department, said his crews frequently work on flooding issues in these in Oklahoma City areas, Southwest 149th between Portland and May and between I-44. They literally come out and will barricade that road and shut it down, so there's no, so access out of this addition, those, all those tenants will be trapped. They can build this up and say all they're going to do, but the city will barricade it because cars just get stranded. They try to go through, it's dangerous, I mean, it's moving, and I think that's a big deal, because they, wherever they put their access on Portland, that's going to get washed out, and wherever they put their access on 149th, that's going to be a significant issue. And there's no curb and gutter on 149th, there's no stormwater control, there's nothing there except a skinny two-lane road that's not really in good shape. The bar ditches are currently full of water right now, we haven't even had any rain in two weeks.
Mr. McClurg, your time has expired. Do you want to finish your sentence, or are you good?
One last thing, I did see that there's a significant amount of buildable area with the existing city services within the urban low-intensity available within the two miles of this site, which would be nice if those guys would go attack that, you know, instead of an area that could undermine the existing people and owners in that area, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. McClurg.
Thank you guys very much for your time.
Commissioner Newman, I think one of the things we might want to hear is about how the mitigation efforts are measured by the city, maybe hearing about that process might be helpful, but before that, Commissioner Newman, thoughts on this?
A lot, and that's on my agenda, or on my notes to talk with Barry about that.
Okay.
Just a little background, I think it's important to understand this area because it's a little unusual in the fact that this particular site and everything to the south of it are essentially flat, and that everything to the north is considerably higher, so this is sort of the edge, as we saw of the floodway itself. And generally, and Mark, you can correct me if you disagree, but generally, everything drains to the south, and I did spend some time last night on the city's website looking at the contours, because clearly this site has sanitary sewer, it has water, it meets the fire service requirements. My struggle with this site is particularly the flooding and drainage, or lack thereof drainage, and I've tried to rectify that in my head, and I'm still having a hard time getting there, and Mark, maybe you can help me get there. One of the things I think we take into consideration, essentially it's flat, it does slope to the south, and I looked last night, and there are approximately 15 houses directly to the south, about a mile to the south, I believe it was 158th Street, a lot of those houses are on, and this area, again, does have a history of flooding, and I, the reason I emphasize that is I have been personally involved in that flooding in terms of not being able to get to work, to school, et cetera, because of that, and I think it's the most significant flooding in Ward Five that I know of, and it has a history of it. I've lived there for 50 years and have witnessed it the entire time. But one of the things that I think is really important, Mark, you've talked, last time, and I apologize, I had a virus last time, couldn't be here, I did watch that, and there were some good points that were brought up here by all of you guys, and one of the things that Mark talked about extensively, and Mr. Johnson talked about extensively, I guess he's not here today, okay, I wish he was, I had some questions, but Barry, you and I had a couple of conversations about this, and I had a few questions that I wanted to follow up on, particularly about the public improvements that are planned or not planned. And so as far as the drainage from this site, it drains from the northeast to the southeast corner, and then drains from that point underneath 149th through a box culvert to the south, essentially down a long ditch, is that correct?
Yeah, very large public works. So, yeah, in general, that's the drainage pattern for that, there is a, I think there's an existing channel that's on the, runs along the west side of Portland, that a lot, the minor drainage, I'll say, that comes from the north would actually cross under 149th, go down that channel, and then, and back into the river. Now, the floodplain that we're looking at is primarily from the river, there is a floodway that exists through there, and there'd be a small floodplain that would be attributed to the drainage that's coming from the northeast of this property.
Okay, is this part of the floodway, or is it outside of the floodway?
So there's a small portion of the floodway, and again, there's a, there's a small trib that comes from the northeast and cuts across this property, and there is a floodplain and a floodway in that. Now, the river floodway is significantly south, it's going to be down closer to the river, I mean, it's probably a mile away from this property, plus or minus, that's the guess. So anything that they're doing in here would not impact, or wouldn't touch, the floodway of the river.
Okay, and so the floodway that you're referencing is for the drainage that's coming from the north, is that correct?
Say that again.
The floodway that impacts this particular piece of property is for the drainage coming from the north?
Yes.
North and northeast?
Yes.
One of the things we talked about was the timing of 149th improvements, I know that, it was brought up earlier, that there are improvements that are scheduled all the way from Santa Fe to May Avenue. Do we know if and when there will be improvements from May Avenue to I-44?
So right now, we don't, I think that that stretch of 149th Street is placed on the list of potential projects for the bond election that's scheduled for 2025. Our deal in Public Works is that we identify the projects, and we'll put those on a list to be funded, then it gets into the city council's hand and the residents' hands on which projects actually make that funded list. So that's a little bit of a loaded question that we don't know, but to my knowledge, it has been placed on that, on that potential projects list to be placed on that bond election.
Okay, assuming that it was approved, I'm assuming that we would be seeing a four-lane street, is that accurate, and probably elevated versus its current elevation that's subject to flooding?
Yeah, it would probably be, and, you know, that would be a decision that was made during design, but because it is inundated currently by that, the floodplain from the river, I would anticipate that it would be, it would be raised to get it above the 100-year flood elevation. That's going to be part of our design criteria if we got into any of the culverts, any of the bridges that might be along there, where they would have to be elevated above that 100-year flood elevation. So yes, it would be, it would be raised.
Okay, and then probably the bottleneck in all this, from what I can tell, is the ditch that goes from 149th Portland's intersection direct due south to the river, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking last night at the contours, again, trying to wrap my head around who's where and what elevation, because when you go out there and look at it, it basically most common, people would say it's flat. There's not a significant grade change in this area into the south, so I noticed the flow line at the bottom of the ditch, according to the city's website, was 1154, the flow line at the bottom of the river directly to the south is 1140, so it's a 14-foot fall over about 1.2 miles, which works out to two tenths of 1% grade. Is that an effective, I'm in A and E, I understand that question I'm asking you, but for our audience and some of our friends, what are your thoughts on the effectiveness of the drainage at that particular type of slope?
That's one of the slopes that, again, this is, it goes back to what's desirable. If we look at what, for what we look at on a design criteria, normally we're looking at about a... For what we look at on a design criteria, normally, we're looking at about a 4/10% to a half a percent slope as opposed to the 2/10%, understanding that when you get down into these type of areas, which we've got this entire river bottom that, you know, the elevations that we're even talking about in 1.2 miles, it may even be flatter than the 2/10% because a lot of that elevation change probably gets down actually in more into the actual river flow line and not along that ditch flow path. So is that the way we would design it? No, it's not. But when we get into an area that's within these... This type of topography where it's very flat on that river floodplain, we would also make concessions on what does that need to look like.
Okay. And as far as... Are there any improvements scheduled for that? Or are there any improvements possible for that in terms of lining that or widening it?
To my knowledge, there are none scheduled at 149th in Portland along that and that mile stretch at this time.
Just so I understand, we always talk about retention. And Mark, I'll let you... I'm sure you're gonna want to comment on this, too. In terms of the plan, as I understand it, we're going to dig a detention pond on the western end of the property, take the spoils from that, use it to elevate essentially an island raised up or change the grade so that it's out of the floodplain and build upon that. Is that correct?
That's correct. In addition, we'll be grading the bar ditch because right now it's almost non-existent. So other improvements will occur, acceleration, deceleration lanes. So the idea that we're not gonna be able to have access to the property, we don't believe is accurate. As a firm, we wouldn't design a subdivision for people to be trapped in. Public Works isn't going to approve a subdivision that would create that type of situation. Road condition is why we're not taking access toward Portland. But Commissioner Newman and I were on a call. It sounds like resurfacing of that may be occurring. And I think in terms of 149th, the timeline of three to four years was thrown out for 149. So this is... This is top... This is an area that is top of mind for folks thinking through projects. So this is vastly different than other cases we've had. Think up near Piedmont, northwest 164th Street, where there was no bond project. There was not even consideration of future bond projects, and 1,500 homes have been approved up there.
And so once we get to the detention project, the detention pond, one of the comments earlier was there's standing water, and there's a very high water table down there. And I believe you told me, Barry, that the volume of water that needs to be retained would have to be retained above that groundwater level. Is that correct?
Yeah, probably what they're looking at doing with this, and I'm kind of speculating based on what I know, that they're gonna have to dig out there. Their final product may be a little different. But they're gonna excavate a pond that will likely have... It'll hold water permanently. So it's a pond with a permanent pool in it. Their detention storage volume would be above that permanent pool level.
Okay.
And that could be influenced by the groundwater as well.
I'll note that based on the letter we received from the airport, it'll likely be a dry pond. Because of our proximity, they don't want large bodies of water birds into the airport. So what we'll have to do is figure out a design, which we are months and months away from that, of how we can accomplish a dry pond that meets the AE overlay requirements.
And I did watch the planning commission last time. I wish I was here. Mr. Johnson mentioned that he felt a lot of the flooding was backwater flooding from the river, which I assume that would be the river filling up and then the water backing up because of that. And one of my questions is gonna be, obviously, the detention structure has limits, that it's designed to a certain capacity. And once we get to that backwater condition, I'm assuming that's been a heavy rain event. Would it be fair to assume that the detention structure no longer has any capacity?
It could be diminished. That's gonna be something that we would look at during their design as well, that the 100-year flood elevation would not impact the design of the pond. But that's a little bit of a generic approach to it as well in that when you look at what the flood elevation in the river will be and the flood elevation on... At this pond, because of the disparity in the drainage basin sizes, we really don't look at... For their detention pond design, it wouldn't be the 100-year design for the pond and the 100-year design in the river. And the reason for that is drainage basin in the river at that point, and I'm making up numbers here, might be 10,000 square miles. The drainage basin contributing to their site might be 10. And so the theory is that the 100-year rainfall event on this site would happen, run through the detention pond, be drained before the 100-year rainfall event in the river ever got to this location. So there's things like that that we take into consideration as well as part of their design.
Okay. The last comment I had was the houses I mentioned before, they were all below the site, according to the city's website. The southeast corner elevation is about 1160 in the houses, and the area to the south that I saw were somewhere around 1150, 1150, 1152. It's a very flat area. So I don't know. I just have concerns that anything that we do here, whether we do something that improves the situation great, it just seems like there's a lot of variables that come into play in terms of drainage and runoff that are beyond our control, and we may accidentally impact the flooding to our neighbors that are further downstream. And I think this is kind of a unique condition that we actually have so many people downstream from this that we don't in a lot of other areas.
I will note, the homes you're mentioning, the majority of them are actually in the floodway, which the city would never permit today because of flooding issues without significant modification, significant study, significant review and approval. So that is not the condition that we are seeking. We are in the floodplain, not in the floodway. And so that 158th Street that you mentioned, you can see where those green dots are. It's a different classification, which creates a different situation. And so our site, just reiterate, is going to be raised up out of the floodplain, reviewed by Barry's office, reviewed by FEMA, to ensure that we do not create any negative externality from this development.
Okay.
I've got...
Go ahead, Commissioner Meek.
I know we're looking at really two cases. The one that follows this, if this one goes through, this is a comp plan amendment. I believe the comp plan is something that we're supposed to consider important. It's there for a reason. That's why they have to ask for a comp plan amendment. I grew up in this area. This intersection, and me trying to make a home by curfew one time cost me a motor in my vehicle. And my question is that I can't wrap my head around is if you build your property up, even if you did acceleration and deceleration lanes on 149th, Portland's just out of the question. It's not even a road, really. Without you replacing the entire road and raising it up, no matter what you do to this 63 acres, this street, all along this exact site, is underwater and barricaded multiple times during the year. So if you read our staff report, talking about the type 5 soil, the heaving, talking about why a riparian area adjacent to the tributary is important as a buffer, if you talk about what agricultural preserve is, they're always in 100-year floodplains. They're not ever anticipated to develop. And if you get into, lastly, that Portland is gravel and that the flood zone affects the site and both access roads to it, I'm just gonna skip straight to... I think you guys all know where I'm going. I just don't see it. I grew up in this area. Up until 2021, I lived in this area. I grew up my whole life there. So I drove it yesterday, and I can verify that all the bar ditches all the way to I-44 as you pass this site are full of water today. This area does not drain. And I don't understand how anything that they do, and I know they have excellent engineering abilities for this site, but they can't change the access in and out to this site and what happens to it in flood, period.
So we were very early in the process. That is something we can absolutely show you at the plating stage of how it's going to be handled. That is why we have our easterly drive placed where it is. The very, very preliminary look that we've done at it, we believe that is the spot where we can safely access even during a major rain event, where there may be an inch or two of water on the street, but that's not gonna flood a car, right? What you drove through would have been a significant depth. So what we're asking is...
Mark, just a question for me. We're on case number 13, and does this have anything to do with really case 13 and the comp plan amendment? I mean, we're so much talking about case 14 and the PUD. I'd just like to get through here to get to there.
Well, I mean, if we don't... I think the sticking point is whether the mitigation warrants a change in the comp plan. Like, so if they can prove sufficiently that they can mitigate the flooding, the damage from the flooding, then that justifies approval of the comp plan amendment. That's because I had that initial thought as well and then backed off of it because it gets the... It has the services efficiency. It has the water. It has a sewer. So then we're really just arguing about whether the floodplain makes it develop.
Commissioner Noble's point, that's where I was headed. What we're asking for is for you to approve this so we can come back and prove to you that this is capable of development. We can't turn a shovel to build a house until we go through the plating stage. And you and your staff will see all of the detailed analysis. And if at that point, we are unable to prove what we're telling you that this is developable, you have the right to deny the application. But we can't get to that step to show you what we can do until we cross this step.
I have one more question then. If you were to get to that step, the comp plan amendment was approved, you began your engineering, and the city public works approved it, do you still have to go through and get FEMA approval?
Yes.
Okay. What's the timeline that you anticipate that would take?
I mean, we're... 18 months?
Yeah, the FEMA approval process can take anywhere from probably nine months to a year and a half.
Right.
And it just depends on the location and the severity of the change.
In your professional opinion, do you believe that even if their engineering protected this site and this neighborhood and its entry and access point, if the FEMA flood area that happens all along this arterial street didn't meet... Didn't get any better, do you think it would cause FEMA to not approve their application?
I think if they can show by their hydraulic analysis of the pre and post-development of this site, and we go through and review and approve that and then submit it to FEMA, I think the likelihood is that FEMA would approve it based on those calculations.
Without 149th being improved?
Yes.
I don't understand that.
Yeah, they're gonna not look at the improvement of 149th. FEMA won't look at what the storm sewer systems on the site are.
That's what I'm afraid of, because that's not gonna stop fire department from come barricading 149th like they do all the time.
What I'm saying is this has to do with this application. If the property to the north was developed all the way to this and they had access out the north, what would we be talking about? So let's just get this one done.
We decide one way... Yeah, maybe at this point, it is best to just call the question. Like, are we... Maybe we're just looking at a motion if there's nothing further. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I was gonna echo Commissioner Newman asked a number of detailed questions about drainage and floodplains and detention. And I was thinking the same thing, but in a simpler way of just, I still can't understand how if the floodplain's here, above the level of ground in that site, you dig a hole to build up that site, that water that normally works as detention that you're controlling runoff of your site, those principles don't apply when you're below the floodplain. Like, that area you build up is displacing water that's going somewhere else down the stream. That's what it... I can't understand how...
Capture in a detention pond.
That's what the hole's for.
Yeah, but the detention ponds below that, like...
Which we will then slowly release at the historic rate.
But it's already below the floodplain level. Like, you've got moving water across the whole site.
Right.
So your detention pond's already below that.
And that's where the sides of it may have to be burned up to increase the capacity of it.
Yeah.
So it's not that the pond is just gonna be... The elevation today, we're just gonna dig it down four feet, and that's it. There's other work that will need to go into it, and that's what Barry's office will review. So we're fine with a vote if that's the direction we need to go. We would ask for your approval to give us the opportunity to come back to you with the necessary studies to prove to you that this is an acceptable development.
Anything further?
Let me just say this. About a 62.9-acre site, it's not a farm. It doesn't need to be farmland. It meets the criteria for urban low. So, I mean, that's why I'm in favor of changing the comp plan. Doesn't mean I'm in favor of the PUD.
And I think I'm inclined to agree with you, Commissioner Noble, in say, I mean, if mitigation can be done, and I'm sufficiently convinced that there's gonna be thorough review of whether that mitigation is adequate and that it doesn't have a negative impact on our neighbors, like, we should at least give them the opportunity... Because it meets all the other criteria, you know, to be changed. Makes sense to me, too. But I understand, and frankly, I aspire to be as smart as our architects on this commission. So I, you know, I'm gonna have to have faith in our city officials on how those mitigation measures are taken into account in this review. So...
Is there anyone else?
I'm gonna put my faith in Plan OKC, a comp plan, and a staff recommendation of denial.
I have the similar sentiment that it's premature on this site. If there's road improvements coming and there's ways of getting this done without the comp plan amendment, and then you're coming back and it's no longer in a floodplain, then you have an alternative option still.
I agree.
Do you see how we end up in the exact same situation?
I do. I do. I'm struggling with it.
And it's 18 months of design, design fees for the uncertainty of whether or not you will approve the next item.
I...
But it's a... That's a big ask for a property owner.
But that's the way that the majority of all of those that you showed us worked.
That... No, that's not true. The entitlements and the zoning occurred well before the engineering and the permitting.
Well, I meant they didn't have comp plan amendments. They weren't...
You may not have needed them.
Sites are... Because few sites were given this designation.
That's what differentiates this site.
This is a different animal. That's my point.
Is it a 62-acre farm? I mean, is that what you're looking for this property to be? I mean, that's... I just don't agree with the agricultural preserve. And it meets the criteria of urban low.
Well, I mean, I think it's an agricultural reserve because it fits in there. And the reason I say that is it meets the USDA criteria.
So does all the land to the north.
I don't know what that is, but I'm...
In our staff report...
Of the land to the north also meets that and was not given that designation.
And that it's not in a floodplain.
Commissioners, I think we have gone back and forth on this sufficiently. Let's have a vote. Commissioner Newman?
I wanna make a motion to deny CPA 2023-5.
Commissioner Newman moves to deny CPA 2023-5. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Meek before we call the vote. Again, a reminder, commissioners, a vote of yes means you support denial. So it's the weird counterintuitive thing here. Yes means you want to deny. So please cast your votes. And we did not get a... We did not get a majority. So I think we need five, right, in order to get there?
Correct. May I ask the question? I believe Commissioner Claire at the last meeting voted yes if something has changed.
I voted... In the last meeting, did we vote to approve the comp plan?
Yes.
Yes, I did. So now I'm...
Yeah, I thought you voted against.
So the motion was to deny.
Yeah, the motion... Yeah, the motion, yeah, it was the reverse.
Apologies, and it was Commissioner La Forge, if something changed between this meeting and the last meeting. So I can-
What changed was the extensive discussion that we just heard for about the last 45 minutes. There was a lot of information and unless, I mean, why did we just talk for 45 minutes? There was information last time, there's new information this time.
Okay.
Otherwise, we could have just voted at the outset of this 45 minutes.
So the motion, the motion is, it doesn't have the necessary five votes. So at this point, it requires either we take a different action or it is continued to the next meeting. So I think that's where we are, unless there is a sense that we can get to five, which I don't think we can.
We'll, we'll take the deferral and then we'll request a deferral of the next case.
Okay, so do we need to actually vote to defer it or is it automatically deferred? Okay. It's deferred, okay. Then we're now in line for item 14.
Item 14 is case PC 10920, applications are rezoned 34, 37, Southwest 149th Street from AA and AE2 to R2 and AE2.
So then the motion, so then do we need to- This one, okay. Gotcha. Okay, so I think what we're, we're going to need Commissioner Newman is a motion to continue items 13 and 14 to the next meeting.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue CPA 2023-5 and to continue PC 100920 to the next meeting, which is-
Whatever the next meeting is, that's sufficient. Yeah, that's sufficient for the motion. I don't know what date. The motion is, Commissioner Newman moves to continue items 13 and 14 to the next meeting of the Planning Commission. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. I will recommend that further, now, we're allowed to do this for the Comp Plan, I believe. Further discussions can occur outside of this meeting between a minority of members. Like, they are still, we're allowed to have discussions with developers about the Comp Plan Amendment. So I, I would highly recommend that, that those conversations take place before we vote. I also, this is just a point of personal privilege, I don't think we need to have a thorough review, again, of, from both sides on the, on the merits of this. I think we just need to come in with, this is where we are, we're not. This is the third time we'll have heard this case. So I think we need to just decide as much as we can where we really intend to be here. So I would encourage some more conversations with Commissioner Newman and others to see where we can, how we can find a way to move forward. So we're in line for item 15.
Item 15 is CPA 2024-2, consideration of a proposed map amendment to the Conference of Plan removing the urban future land use typology area layer from the urban low intensity base looted designation on approximately 107 acre tract located at southeast corner of northwest 164th Street and North Mustang Road.
So Baneri Mujicortis, Planning Department, CPA 2024-2. It's associated with PUD 1992. Just for you to have an idea where it's located, it's all the way to the northwest of the city. The existing locate, the existing condition, the land use typology, right now is urban future. In terms of land use, right now it's undeveloped land with some rural residential. It's an agricultural district in terms of zoning. The applicant is proposing to extend city water, is proposing to extend sanitary sewer. In terms of emergency services, the western part of the site is located within rural response time. I want to make a little comment on this one, and it's that if you go into our interactive map right now, it's not going to look like this. And the reason for that is that this map is with the data that has been updated. We haven't been able to update yet that information, but we thought it was fair for the developer that we use the, you know, most updated data that we have available for this. So after a lot of discussion about this, that's what we decided to do this. In, in general, the proposed, the applicant is proposing to extend city water and sewer services because at least western part of the site is located in rural response time. And due to the proximity to the city borders, there is not really expectation of changes in the level of our emergency services in this area. So that's the reason why we are recommending approval for the CPA. I don't know if you have any other questions.
Any questions, commissioners? Any questions?
We're not on the floodplain?
Thankfully. Commissioner Claire, anything?
Yeah, this is my ward, definitely not looking for a 45 minute debate on this. Developers bringing water and sewer, it's three miles to the closest city of Oklahoma City Fire Station, but we also have, I believe, we have an agreement in place with Piedmont, correct?
I actually don't think we have automaticate agreement.
We don't have automaticate agreement.
No, with Piedmont.
Okay. Okay, that doesn't really change much for me. I'm in favor of this and ready to make a motion if we don't have anyone to sign to speak.
We do not.
Any questions from commissioners? Okay, all right. So based on the findings above, the staff recommends approval of the request, and I support that. And like to, to recommend approval of CPA 2024-2.
Commissioner Claire moves approval of CPA 2024-2. I think we're missing a second.
Went to vote.
Okay, I can't see it on my screen.
It was, it was slow, so I went ahead and jumped in there.
Cool, well, seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. This is approval of the Comp Plan Amendment. And it is approved. Thank you. We're in line for item 16.
This is PUD 1992, application to rezone 16400 North Mustang Road from AA, PUD 1992.
David Box, 522, Call Core Drive. I'm saddened that Mr. Zizal left us so he couldn't see what an efficient Conference of Plan Amendment application looks like, but I'm sure he'll review it this evening. I am here on behalf of the applicant-
In your car right now.
To this PUD. And it's a mixed use development that would allow commercial on the corner, R1 in the balance. The site should look familiar. We did the southeast corner section in PUD 1851 approximately a year and a half ago. And then the site that's immediately adjacent to the east is zoned R1 and is under development right now. There are four TEs, all of which we agreed to, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Claire?
I don't have anything, any questions, and the applicant's agreeable all the TEs. Prepare to make a motion.
No one signed up to speak? No questions here?
All right, I move to recommend approval to City Council, PUD 1992.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend to City Council approval of PUD 1992. That motion is seconded by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're in line for item 17.
Item 17 is case SPD 1602, application to rezone 1016 Northwest 67th Street from R4.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant who's with us, as well as the architect on the project, your former colleague, Asa Highsmith. Here we are at 67th, just east of Western. What we propose is a multifamily product that would allow some limited commercial, maybe a coffee shop type use on the ground floor. This area, as you're aware, has been trending more residential in the past several years. If you see on your screen to the kind of southeast, that Spud 1488, that was a fairly large scale, five story apartment project that was recommended for approval by you and ultimately approved by City Council in the last probably year. There are two TEs that deal with setbacks that I'd like Mr. Highsmith to walk through why we can't agree to those based upon the, the project that we have designed.
Asa Highsmith, 435 Northwest 23rd, Suite 214. On both of the setback issues, staffs indicated that the concerns are us meeting the street tree requirements. We're convinced, you know, well, first of all, on both, they're due to the location of the water line. Obviously, you can't, or there are ordinances against the street trees being within a certain distance from where water lines run. On the north front edge, the water line per our survey is directly behind the curb cut. We feel like we've got ample room behind that curb cut to achieve our street trees outside of that 10 foot without a concern, so we'd really like to keep our zero foot there. On the east side, on Ollie, there's, there's almost no chance, honestly, because of where the water lines run, that, that we will get outside of that area. This said, we feel like there's multiple options for creative answers to the street tree question. I believe, and staff have to confirm this, but I believe they seemed open to agreement or some commitment for a 10% open space area on our site. We'd be happy to agree to that. Additionally, we'd be happy to agree to enhanced streetscaping there. Further, we do understand, and I've had personal experience with this, that we can get certain species of street trees approved above water lines. Now, we have to go through Public Works during that process, depends on the species of street tree, of course, right? Just like we have specific ones that can be planted under power lines. We've got similar options that can go over water lines depending on the depth. We'd want to uncover that depth and get an answer to that. But I hope that, you know, those that here that do know me understand that our projects, we, we go pretty hard on landscaping. We think it's a critical part of, of every project and, you know, trust that reputation to, to help us get an approval here today. So with that said, we'd, we'd really like to keep our options open. Obviously, we're extremely early stage here, but based on the Comp Plan, this area is a rural medium, or sorry, urban medium. And we feel like the direction of the Comp Plan in that sense provides for this, this character of development. So, you know, might there be options to, to achieve what we want with these setbacks? Possibly, but, you know, we feel like it's a little bit unfair because we didn't put the water lines there. We still want the street trees, you know, to have these competing requirements is tough on a project like this. So we'd just like the chance to at least work it out with staff at that point to get a great project.
Go ahead, Dustin.
Dustin Sigray's Utilities Department, no tree can be within 10 feet of a water line, I don't care what species it is. However small shrubs and bushes may be because of the depth of the root. Because if we ever have to repair that water line, we're going to go in there and rip out that tree and we will not replace it. So if you require street trees there, then relocate the water line or give them the proper setback or another easement or whatever to be able to put their street trees in, well, it will not interfere with our water lines. We've been having too many issues with trees and plantings being over our water line causing us to be able to repair and make proper repairs to those and then spend extra money, the taxpayers or the ratepayers' money, to be able to make those repairs because we have allowed trees over our utilities. And we're trying to stop the mistakes that we have seen in the past to continue on in the future.
Okay, that's helpful. I think, first, Asa, do you miss us? Do you miss, do you miss 45 minute debates about the Comp Plan Amendments?
So much.
Sounds like, it sounds like we shouldn't put, even work on putting trees over, in that location over the water line. So let's go to what the alternative is. What's the alternative?
I want to also make sure that we all, and myself mainly, understand what we're talking about. We're looking at your exhibit on screen. On the north of the site, we're, we're looking at the street trees that are south of the parallel parking, right? And you're talking, and you're saying, I think what, what's said is, the water line is north of the parking in the street, outside the curb. So there's a minimum of eight and a half feet here, right?
It's just, it's like right behind our curb. Now, we've got-
Behind the curb as shown with the parallel parking?
So, so we've got the eight feet of-
So it's not under the street, it's in the right way?
It's just right there. We've got a, we've got the eight feet of parking and, you know, this site plan, yes, shows essentially a, I think it's a four and a half, just, you know, this is, this is early, planting zone, sidewalk, and then additional to the, to the building. We would simply, you know, modulate that pedestrian zone to make the street tree work and keep it outside of where the water lines run. You know, again, based on what we have to, to our property line, I'm confident we can achieve on that north side. Obviously, if, if we come with plan at, you know, the plan review stage and we're not meeting that with a zero foot setback, we're going to be in trouble. So I feel like, again, if we can hit that zero foot setback option that we're asking for, that'd be, that'd be what we're looking for.
But that's only with regard to the north side, and that would require us to take no action with the current application, correct?
Yeah, the application as drafted allows what Asa's talking about.
On the north side. So the question is then about Ollie on the east side, right?
Yeah, that's the second topic to come to, to make sure we're on the same page. But also that your sidewalk could, your sidewalk could push to the curb and the trees could come inside of that, too, right?
It absolutely could. You know, it's just my personal preference that we always have the trees in between that, that walking path and the street. I feel like that feels better. So it's always my goal to try that first, but yeah, we've got that option.
I think the point is there are options at the time of, you know, actual construction that we're confident we can work with the city to get approved what we, what they want, what we want. We just need the, the ability within the SPD to have those correct.
Yeah, but, but again, we're only talking about the north side, not on the east side, are we?
I think, I think it's both.
Okay.
We don't agree to either TE.
That's a, like, that's why I'm, I'm trying to get to a point where is it like, it's not really a zero foot setback issue, it's a sidewalk, parking, curb line, street tree issue. Deal with it out there. The building, setting the building back further isn't really fundamentally changing any of that.
But except where the water line is?
If it makes you all feel comfortable, as we review utilities, we actually review all building permits that come through, and these are the things that we actually look for. So if they submit a design for the building permits for the construction and their trees do not meet the requirements, we will not approve the building permit. And so I just want to, you know, get, throw that out there to be able to help you know that we will review that at the building permit stage. So if that affects your decision now to be able to approve this, that we will catch it later.
So then I'd, I'd want to be able to say, so if you can't, so what's their contingency at that point?
They'll have to relocate the water line, they'll have to do whatever they need to do, they can shrink their parking lot, they can do whatever they have to do to be able to make it work.
Again, I'm just trying to make sure that when we make this decision, we're doing whatever it takes so that if you can't put the trees there, you have what you need to be able to have the trees somewhere on the site.
The Spud just gives us the option to go zero. If ultimately they say no, well, then perhaps we have to move it back. But if we don't get zero in the Spud, we don't have that option.
Ability to do it, gotcha. So we're okay with this.
If that makes you feel more comfortable about the placement of the water line and the trees, we do review all the building permits and we do look for those things.
Cool. I'm just trying to make sure I understand if there are any changes needed to the proposal as written to accommodate this concern and still try to have the street trees. So it sounds like it's okay the way it's written.
We, to delete the TEs allows the process to go through.
Cool. Comments from planning staff on that?
No, I don't have any comments.
Cool.
Is there anything different or unique about Ollie that we should be talking about separate to 67? I don't know if that's a question to you or does anyone else have any concerns?
The only thing for me in our thinking about it is, you know, one, where the water line is, again, has prevented the, the situation we have on the north side. Two, it's our east face. You know, for me, when it comes to street trees, obviously a west facing facade to me is much more important that we accomplish that. On the east side, I feel like, you know, we're, we're looking at morning sun primarily. And so for me, I think, you know, even if we, we end up at a zero foot setback, we can accomplish the street trees. I think there's, this is why I offered the enhanced, you know, landscaping or committing to that open space, like, any of those I feel like are options that, to make sure that we're meeting the, the goal of the city's, you know, Comp Plan requirements and what staff wants without preventing our options for development.
Other, other comments or questions? Commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak, so I think we're ready for a motion. And that's, that'd be, I think, to approve and eliminate the two TEs.
In Commissioner Powers' absence, I'll move to recommend approval of SPOD 1602, deleting TE 1 and 2.
Commissioner Clare moves to recommend to City Council approval of SPOD 1602, removing the two technical evaluations and the staff report. That motion's been segmented by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes.
Okay, the motion passes. Good luck. We're in line for item 18.
Item 18 is case PC 10921, application to rezone 15051 North Rockwell Avenue from PUD 1300 to C3.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive. This is an application that would allow C3. It is worth noting that within PUD 1300, it is O2, so we're not putting the C3 right next to single family. Staff does recommend approval. Happy to answer any questions.
This is in Ward 8. Commissioner Noble.
I reviewed the application. I don't have any questions. It's got the O2 buffer all the way around it. It's a hard corner. Seems like-
Seems appropriate.
The other one? Any questions?
Any questions from commissioners? I think we're ready.
Without Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve PC 10921.
Commissioner Noble moves to recommend approval of PC 10921 to City Council.
That motion's been segmented by Commissioner Meek. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 19.
Item 19 is PUD 1949, application to rezone 9400 Broadway Extension from O2 and SPOD 1166.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a PUD that would allow for, I think, an underutilized and underdeveloped corner to allow commercial uses to see a bit of a redevelopment. The PUD includes all the commercial uses you would expect, commercial uses that are consistent with what recently been approved up and down Broadway, notably the half-development to the south of Britain. And in addition, we do seek a non-accessory sign, which are handled through TEs 1 through 4 that we cannot agree to. We can't agree to TE 5. So how did we get here? We got here because we went to the Board of Adjustment and we sought a variance to the moratorium. The moratorium was in place to prevent any PUD or SPOD from seeking any sign greater than 200 square feet and non-accessory signs. The only way to remove yourself from that prohibition was to first file an application before the Board of Adjustment, go before the Board of Adjustment, plead your case as to why you meet the statutory conditions. Then, if the Board of Adjustment grants the variance to the moratorium, the doors are open for you to seek approval in a normal course, that being the PUD. We went before Mr. Noble and his esteemed colleagues on the Board of Adjustment, and they did grant approval of the variance to the moratorium, which puts us here today. Now, a bit of a unique situation has occurred in the last several weeks in that the City Council has approved a new site ordinance. So the new site and ordinance will go into effect, assuming there's no lawsuit filed, in the next couple of weeks. So what that means is, this is really the last PUD that would be afforded the opportunity to ever have this type of application. It's consistent with what is immediately on the west side of 235. I shared on our Zoom meetings with most of you that immediately west of, of 235, you have several signs. One's a Lamar sign, one's a Grover's Communications sign. At least two of the signs on the west were approved in the last several years that were part of the PUDs that transpired, that then led to the moratorium. So all we're asking is that we be viewed in the same manner as those were viewed, and those were approved, recommended approval by this body, ultimately approved by City Council. Of course, one of the concerns is going to be, what about the proliferation of signs if we were to approve this? Well, good news is, come March 15th, it will become illegal a possibility because the more, the, the new sign code would not allow it. So this is a bit of a kind of one-off, last in line, consistent with what this body and City Council had historically done for several years before the new sign code. So we're asking for your approval in the same manner that you recommended approval on all of those other items up and down Broadway Extension. Again, we agreed to TE 5, and we would ask for the deletion of TEs 1, 2, 3, and 4. Happy to answer any questions.
I think the first one is, I think maybe we should just get clarity about the, the scope of the Board of Adjustment's review. So what is that? Is it, is this an administrative, is this purely administrative? This is substantively reviewing whether or not there should be a sign over the 200 feet, right?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department, the more, the, the Board of Adjustment granted a variance to allow the applicant to seek a freestanding sign larger than 200 square feet, which was not, is not currently still allowed per the moratorium.
But, but the criteria by which they make that decision is?
They, well, to clarify, the Board of Adjustment is not granting a variance to sign size, height, location, anything. They're simply allowing the applicant to seek a larger sign through the PUD process. This PUD was previously submitted, and staff refused to process it because it asked, it requested a sign larger than would be allowed per the sign moratorium. So the applicant then went to the Board of Adjustment to seek that variance in order for us to be able to bring it to you.
Right, but I guess I'm wondering, and maybe this is a question for, I mean, for Commissioner Noble, too. So the standard by which they're looking at it, there, we're the first people to look at it substantively, whether the, the sign code should be evaluated or not?
Correct.
Or their review was?
They did not-
Let's be clear about this.
Not, not the sign code. Think of it like this. You file an application, and there is a barrier if the application seeks a sign greater than 200 square feet, okay? The only way to move past that barrier is the Board of Adjustment has to grant you a variance which moves the barrier. There is no, they didn't give any review of, is it, this is, is this an appropriate sign? Is this size appropriate? It simply allows you to go through the legislative process.
Gotcha.
It's allowing the application to be processed, not, we think this sign needs to go here.
Gotcha. So we're making that determination?
Yes.
The legislative process is what will decide size.
But to be clear, if this application had been submitted, you know, let's say, March 16th, this would not be allowed? If, right?
Oh, under the new sign code?
Under the new code.
Correct. But we filed our application in March of 2003, so we get to be, we are afforded review based upon the law and-
At the time.
What it exists at the time.
Yeah.
Because there's, I mean, the ordinance is not even effective. And whether or not it gets challenged at District Court, we don't know that it will become effective on March 15th. But we're afforded the laws as they existed on the date of filing.
Makes sense. Okay. This is in my ward. Obviously, I'm, I'm good with the, the change in the zoning itself to bring everything in line and consistent throughout that whole parcel, I think makes sense. As far as the sign is concerned, and I, I hate that Commissioner Powers is not here because I'm sure she would have a lot to say about our compliance with the sign code. My number one concern in reviewing this was what's nearby and the impact that the sign would have on the businesses and the operation nearby. Obviously, there's no residential that's impacted by this, so that was a, that's a relief for me. It is near a highway, which also makes sense to me. They are, as we just had clarified, they are not subject to the new sign code, so I, I'm in support. I, I think that it's been a long time coming on the, on the sign code. Sounds like there could be even more challenges to the new sign code, so this is all just really weird, frankly. Other thoughts?
What's everyone, I mean, everyone in agreement? The applicant says they can't, or they won't accept TEs 1 through 4? Does anyone?
Because, yeah, those are all related to the sign.
Yeah, that's all about the sign.
So what are, I'm trying to get the understanding of what we're approving. So we're approving you to do C4 compliant signs in a C3 base?
Yeah, so you're approving a, a PUD that would allow for, because right now it's zoned O2, so you're approving the commercial development plus the ability to have the one non-accessory sign.
Now, that, like, on size, are we, I'm looking at a picture here with the billboard that's already on that site, right? This isn't the original.
That's, that's transposed.
Oh, so that is a proposal for what would go there?
Yeah, which is consistent with, if you, if you were to look on Google Earth-
On the road.
West of 235, every 1,200 feet, you see, you would see an identical sign.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate, I'm not, I'm not really questioning that. I just, I wanted to understand that image of like, is that existing? And you're saying another one, or that's what you're proposing? I, I get it. It's pretty consistent with what you see along the Broadway Extension.
So under the future, the new sign code, the property that the sign would be on would have to be zoned I-2.
That's my understanding. The sign code is massively complicated and hard to read, but my belief is-
That would probably be the process in order to get this sign.
I-2. Yeah, you would need industrial zoning to have a traditional billboard.
And, and again, I'm driving down the Broadway Extension. A sign right there looks perfectly logical. It's at least 1,200 feet away from the next one.
Yeah, and that's another point, you know, the, the city handles it different than the state. So billboards are permitted through the state. The state has their rules. The state has a 1,000-foot spacing requirement. The city believed that they wanted more strict requirements, so their spacing requirement's actually 1,200 feet, so that you have less signs than you would normally see anywhere else in the state. So we meet all spacing requirements. We, the heightened Oklahoma City one as well as the state.
Yeah, my only sticking point was the fact that we have a new sign code and this wouldn't be compliant. But it is subject to the old, to the rules that were, that existed at the time of its submission, so, and it does meet the separation requirement.
If you got anyone here long enough to, to be here when Asa was here, I wish he was still here, because of course, Asa would say, it's a highway, who cares? It's the ugliest part of the city. Why do we care if there's signs?
Not going that far, David. Definitely not going that far. I think we're just looking for a motion.
All right, I'll move to recommend approval of PUD 14, excuse me, 1949, to City Council, deleting TEs 1 through 4, subject to TE 5.
Commissioner Clare moves to recommend to City Council approval of PUD 1949, removing technical evaluations 1 through 4. That motion's been segmented by Commissioner Newman. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in line for item 20.
Item 20 is case C 7627, preliminary plat of bluegrass meadows located south of West Hefner Road and east of North Sarah Road, and a variance to section 5.3.1. D. 5 of, of the subdivision regulations.
Hello, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a preliminary plat. You may recall, we came through with the zoning not too long ago, I want to say, within the last several months, which is PUD 1972. I will tell you that as it relates to TE number 3, we can delete that because we will meet the subrags and provide the stubs as indicated. So TE 3 is no longer necessary, and then we do agree with the rest of the TEs. This is a development that's consistent with what you see in the area. I understand that to the west is RA, and there have been protest letters submitted. All of the emails that we received from staff up until this morning, my client sent an email to everyone we had contact information for, trying to explain what it is we're doing. So we have a preliminary plat before you that is consistent with the zoning, it's consistent with the conference of plan. The difference between to the west and where we are, of course, is to the west has no water, excuse me, no sewer. I don't know if they have water or not, but they have no public sewer, which is why you have larger lots. Here, of course, we extended water, extended sewer. That's why urban-level development is appropriate. That's why PUD 1972 is approved and why this plat is consistent and conforms to all the regulations necessary for development under PUD 1972. So we'd ask for your approval, again, deletion of TE 3 because we're going to provide those street stubs, and we agree with all the other technical evaluations.
Thank you. This is in Ward 1. Commissioner Clare.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I did, I did receive quite a few emails that I was not able to respond to, as this is a preliminary plat, but I suspect we have several folks signed up to speak, so I'm ready to hear from them.
Great. And before our neighbors, and we, we do intend to call on our neighbors, I do want, I think this is an important point to make. The question before us is not whether it is appropriate to build single-family homes on 6,000-square-foot lots at this location. That determination was made when the rezoning application to create PUD 1972 was passed by this planning commission. I don't recall when that occurred, so maybe staff can tell us when exactly that happened. But at that time, we approved the ability to build this amount of housing at this density at lot sizes that are like this. So the question for the commission today is not whether it is appropriate to build at this density, not whether it's appropriate to build with this lot size, but rather this site layout, because this, the property owner already has the right to build at this density level. The property owner already has the right to build lots of this size. So our question is, our review at this time is not whether or not it is appropriate. So I just want to let you know that even if we were opposed to that, we don't have any ability to change that, that those laws have already been enacted. So we are just here to discuss the, the site layout and the appropriateness of that layout. So just wanted you to be aware that we cannot reverse course to eliminate the, the property owner's right to build at this density. So with that, our first speaker is Bob Crahan, and I apologize if I got your name wrong. I can move the order. Don't worry. If somebody wants to go first or last, that's fine.
Please. Please come to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Carrie Gray. I live at 1062 North Sarah Road, and I actually own the property that abuts to this, too. The other 10 acres does. I think what they were trying to say is, we're just trying to save the 45 minutes because we have had people leave because, and just have one person speak versus everybody for time. I will say that unfortunately, we did not get a letter about all this, or I think a lot of us would have been here a lot sooner. And I do feel like because we are in a rural setting and we do have bigger lot sizes, that 300-foot is not sufficient to let everybody know around you. Now, I know that's probably something that you guys can't change, but I do want to put that out there, that it is, that was probably why we weren't here, because I know you have got a lot of letters, and I feel like that would have helped our case a little bit. Concerns would be the roads. I do have pictures of what that road does look like out front. I don't know, I did not print them out. I have them on my iPad. I do not know if you guys can look at them, or I can show them to you, but I would love to let you see what the infrastructure of that road is. Now, I do know we got a-
You don't mind passing it around, you could?
Oh, yeah. Perfect.
If you don't mind that.
No, don't mind at all. Just, if you swipe too far, you might see too many family, or too many pictures of my kids, but-
We like cute kids here.
You should be okay. So this photo is, and you can, you can actually look through, if you want to look through, these, these photos are actually looking right at where that property is. I did, we did receive an email from the developer. However, it did say Sarah Road is proposed to be getting done, but in my opinion, I think a road study does need to be done on this because there, the traffic from the other developments coming around this on Sarah Road has been astronomical. Like, we live there, obviously, because we have that rural piece of it, and it is nice. And I understand that's not the fight today, but a big piece of it is the infrastructure of that road is awful. So I would love to see a road study done or a turn lane done into that if they did end up doing that, because we need some help on that road. It is horrible. The next concern would be, is we have cattle, we have longhorns, we have goats, we have all kinds of things that does abut to that property. I would not want a six-foot stockade fence that I'm going to have to mess with later on. I don't want any kind of things that would be messing with my cattle. I would want an infrastructure that was very solid, a fencing that I would not have to mess with later on, that I wouldn't even have to, I'd love something 10-foot tall, wouldn't have to see these properties, but, you know, if we could get a very solid structure where I wouldn't have to worry about my cattle and my agricultural getting over there or being disrupted, that would be amazing. Another concern would be our property values. I understand that's probably past the point, but I do want to say that, that, that those houses do not conform to other things around it, just to put that point in there. I'm not sure where- I'm not sure where the sewer's going to come from, because the sewer is actually in the back of, we actually have the Dunkin's here, and the sewer line is actually in the back of their property that they would come to, that they're wanting to hook into. The issue with that is there's also a huge gas line that is right there, and they don't have an easement to get back there. So, I'm not sure how they're planning to get the sewer back there. That is a very big concern on how that is going to happen. I guess, was there anything else?
I have.
Okay. Before I finish, is there any questions for me or anything like that, of any points that I've made?
Sure. So, the first question I have is, I just want to clarify what you're saying about the fencing. Are you saying, because the only, I, I'm sure in the zoning, it addresses the screening requirements for their property. Obviously, we can't control anything outside of that parcel. But I believe that if it follows the typical screening requirements, I'm looking at the applicant here, that's going to be a six-foot standard wooden fence, correct? And that's going to be required along Sarah Road, right, with landscaping between Sarah Road and that fence?
Okay, well, my property, my land actually butts up to this neighborhood. So, where you see that-
Gotcha. So, you're on the, you're north of it?
I am just nor, my, and I actually own the acreage. So, I own that house that you have right there, and then, that, that's my property.
Oh, excellent.
And I got no letter. I understand. I just want to make that a point.
And I want to clarify that you're correct, that the notice requirement is not set by us.
I understand, but that will be something I will be working on, but I do disagree with that. The next piece is, is I do own the land that I just purchased, so that's probably, it, it went to my, actually, my deceased grandmother, which we just found the letter, otherwise we would have been here sooner, that I purchased right there between my house and that property. And I do have cattle on that property. And that's kind of what I was concerned about, is I don't, six-foot stockade fencing, that, the last of that, I mean, my dad used to own a fence company in Oklahoma for, you know, years and years. It does not last, you know, over twenty years. That's going to be a major deal, and I don't want, I would rather have something a little bit more of a permanent structure that was not a wooden fence. So, I don't know if it needs to be a metal fence, an iron fence. I don't know, but I'm not okay with, like, just, I don't know if that has to do with you guys or not, but I would, I would like to put that in.
I'll certainly ask. How do you contain your cattle now?
We actually have a barbed wire fence there, but we don't have any neighbors. Like, before, it was, it was just all agricultural, so I never had to worry about people being right there before. So, just like every other person that has cattle, we all have barbed wire fences.
So, I believe that there's screening that would be required on the north side of the site, right? Six-foot standard wooden fence, right?
Yes, the, the PUD requires, it's got, let me just pull it out.
Can we request to you guys that it be different, is my question?
I think that's outside of the scope of the plat, so council's telling me that's outside the scope of the plat. So, that would be, have been determined in the zoning.
So, section nine point one of the PUD says, excuse me, nine point four, "No less than a six and no greater than an eight-foot-high wall shall be required along the boundary of this parcel where adjacent to any residential use. Said wall shall be constructed entirely of stucco brick or stone or continuous footing, or may be constructed of wood with metal posts." That's the screening regs in the PUD.
It at least would have wood, metal posts, and that might not help, but unfortunately, that would-
I hope you hear my concern with that. I mean, realistically, I really do. The roads are a really big concern. I hope you did look at those photos. And I do appreciate, I did hear back from one council member, and I do appreciate them reaching back out to me and just letting me know kindly. I did appreciate that. So, okay, any other questions for me or addressing my other concerns?
One thing I might add, just on your concern about the notice area of these applications, is Senator Kristin Thompson, I believe, is working on an amendment to extend that range, particularly in rural areas, which is like where her district is. So, you might even reach out to her of what's your support and concern.
I will, and I mean, I appreciate, and it's not that, listen, like, it's not, I sell real estate for a living. That's what I do. I understand we have housing, and I understand developments are necessary, but I also think, too, that whenever this came into play, this is not conforming to our area, and I, and I think it's really sad that we, we didn't have the notice, because I literally live three hundred and fifty-five feet from this property.
Yeah, I understand. That's a valid point.
I agree.
We, we've said for a long time that we have concerns with, with the zoning, and it is, it's, it's law.
But please look at roads, and please ask them to do a road study, because it is a very big concern. It is very concerning. So, okay.
Also, just, just to clarify, we, as planning commission members, are not allowed to have conversations with you about a plat. We are explicitly allowed to not do that.
I understand.
So, we, I try not to even respond to anything like that and try to just say it in the meeting, because we're not supposed to have interaction with you about that.
I just appreciated somebody saying, like, "Thank you for your concern. Please show up at this meeting to let it out." I mean, that was, it was just nice to be heard. Just making a point, so.
Well, we appreciate you coming down here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I missed, when was the zoning approved? Did we say, did we figure it out?
I don't know.
David?
January second this year.
This year, okay.
This year?
Yeah, one, two, two thousand twenty-four, so you guys would have seen it December, November.
November of twenty-three?
Yes. But yeah, the City Council approved at the first meeting of this year.
Gotcha. Okay, I think there was, are you signed up, too? Okay, okay. Okay, come on up. So, I understand there's a number of you who've conceded your time to Carrie, but I don't know if that's everybody, so.
My name's Joshua Duncan, one zero six zero one Northwest Hundred and Third Place. I'm actually the property across that they're wanting to run the sewer off of, so I think, it was said that we don't have sewer and water, but we do. It runs to the back of my property, the two-acre lot in the far corner there. So, I guess my question is, how do we go about, because I was approached ahead of time to see if I would sign off on this, and I said we would not. How do we go from here for them to run off the sewer in my property after I've declined to do that? Is that?
I would, instead, I'm going to ask you after, after you get finished with this statement, your statement for us, go visit with Dustin Seagraves.
Okay, thank you. And then, the second thing was, just to kind of give me a little bit of an understanding, because I heard the gentleman earlier, when he was talking about making improvements to the property in his back, that they were going to have to pave the road from whatever road that was to where he wanted to use it, if he wanted to have access. This road's extremely bad shape, so are they going to be held to the same requirement to pave to their?
That was about an alley. That was about a public alley and the public alley access, which is, it's a different standard for a street.
Okay, just an alley. Okay.
Unfortunately, you know, I, we know, this road's bad. It's not a, it is not a, a good thing, and I, I certainly empathize with that, with that concern.
Yeah, so, there's a twenty twenty-five bond issue that's getting ready to be put together.
Yes, sir.
I would strongly, you guys, talk to your councilmen and get that put on their agenda. I've been over there. I've driven that road. I just drove that road, just to check this property out. It's, it is a disaster, but there's so many cars over there, all around those schools. It, there's a lot of, of infrastructure that needs to be rebuilt over there. So, Ward one, call your councilman and-
All right, and who do I need to speak to about this sewer?
Dustin. He's raising his hand.
Okay, I appreciate you.
Okay, we have a number of standballs. Do you all, all want to come speak? Are you all good, or? Okay. Are you signed up, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, please come to the microphone.
My name is Von Kray, and I live right outside the entranceway to the new development. So, when they pull out of their driveway, they're going to be looking at the back of my house, just for reference. I'm so disappointed. I know there's nothing you can do now, but I paid a large amount of money to live on a large amount of land, to not live in an apartment complex. And they're going to build basically an apartment complex in my backyard. It's going to be cheap housing. Within two years, there'll be rentals, and it'll probably be Section Eight, and I'll be living in an apartment complex. It's going to be in my backyard. I, I don't know how this passed. I thought I was informed and involved. I'm, I'm disappointed that this can happen, that this density can be built amongst a low-density rural agricultural area. That's, that's all I can say. I'm disappointed.
I'm Lieutenant Commander Kimber Bannon. I live at one one two-two-one North Sarah Road. I am to the north of Hefner, between Hefner and Northwest Expressway, on the west side of the road. I have five-point-two-eight acres. We recently had that stretch of road redone. Anytime there is a rain or below freezing, it is mailbox roulette. They cannot make that road any wider, because there is a high-pressure gas line on the west side of the road, and the properties to the east side of the road are much smaller and with less easement for, for road construction. So, my concern with the entrances of the new development, since we cannot discuss the fact that it's ridiculous, I would be able to put twenty houses on my property at that can, that rate. But at the entrances to this, there is no turn lane allowed. There is houses right up to the edge of the road, and that road is simply not wide enough to make the appropriate approve, improvements for those particular entrances. The only thing I would be able to say is, make the lots yet even smaller and put the turn lanes on that existing property to go in and out of that residential area. When I moved into my property in two thousand seventeen, we put a shop up. I had to get a permit from Canadian County, which this property is in Canadian County, is it not?
I don't know.
It is. I had to get a permit for my shop. I have a thirty-by-fifty shop. Canadian County required it to be twenty-five feet from the property line to my southerly neighbor. These lots are fifty-one feet wide. There is no possible way Canadian County would allow a structure to be within twenty-five feet of a property line. So, again, I don't understand how this council could have approved this density on this property, when Canadian County refused to allow a permitted structure be within twenty-five feet of the property line. Now, since that's not up for discussion, and I am not going to take my full five minutes, those property number one on that and the other one by the entrance will need to be omitted so that turn lanes can be put in. That street can't get any wider, and it sure isn't going to get any better. Thank you.
Thank you. There's also Chuck Holsher. Excellent.
Chuck Holsher, one zero four zero one Katy Line Drive in Yukon. I find it very puzzling that the entity that's actually conducting this development was founded and filed the same month that the zoning was approved. The, the biggest concern, I and my neighbors have been discussing this, and I agreed to come down for a group of them, so I decided to wait, and even though you've very clearly explained that most of our concerns were already out of bounds. The, I absolutely agree with her that the, those, those turn lanes should be cut into that property so that they don't impede the rest of the traffic. If you're familiar with the, the issues we've had on Piedmont Road, you know, when people block up that highway because they, they're trying to turn left and traffic is heavy, you end up with major accidents and put people in danger. I also would like to just, just point out to the commission, because again, I've sat through your forty-five-minute debate, that there's already so much pressure on the traffic devices as you're coming off Kilpatrick Turnpike into our area at Morgan Road, that backs up where you will find on, on, you know, busy days and at peak times. You'll have traffic sitting a quarter mile back on the turnpike, just waiting for an intended driver to blast into the back of the, of a group of cars, because they can't get off of there and, and move along. The condition of the roads are deteriorating rapidly. Just getting out of, of my little neighborhood, in the morning, anytime between seven and eight-thirty, you have a constant line of cars that backs up an eighth to a quarter of a mile, where people sit in traffic for long periods of time, and they can't find better ways around. The infrastructure is, is in terrible shape, continuing to approve any housing addition regardless of density, just puts more and more pressure on all of that. And we're going to end up having to, I guess, wait until we have deadly accidents at, at a number that we can count as a percentage, so that we can actually get something done about that. And, and again, very disappointed in the density that has been allowed in this neighborhood. It is totally inconsistent with the neighboring community, and a quick drive around, even in the, the more, most closely built areas around there, my son lives in that neighborhood, my daughter lives in that neighborhood, and there, those lots are nothing like what, what has been proposed here, and very disappointed that that was able to gain approval so quickly. And certainly, I know there's a lot of people that are curious who the developer or the investors are that have designed this.
Thank you. The only person I think I have signed up, left signed up, is Bob Crahan? I don't think you submitted one, but go ahead. Come on. We'll take it. You'll be last, so that's okay, unless Bob's going to want to say something. Okay, go ahead. You're, you're our last speaker. You have five minutes. Please give us your name and address for the, for the record.
My name is Kristin Hillian. I live at one zero six one seven Northwest Hundred and Third Place, so I'll get to look at this ugly neighborhood through my other neighbors' homes. Just want to say, I am frustrated and disgusted that this got this far without us getting any type of notice, because all of the teenagers and everything that are going to be living in this neighborhood are going to be coming to my neighborhood to vandalize, steal, what have you. My neighborhood consists mostly of houses that are four, five hundred thousand dollars and up, and I moved out of a neighborhood that had what I tend to call shitshacks, to get away from that, and now you're bringing it to me. So, I'm just very disgusted and frustrated that we only learned of this after it's too late.
Well, I'm sorry you're frustrated, but-
I realize that's not what's on the table today, but lots of people would have showed up had we known. Traffic is definitely going to be a problem.
Well, thank you. Certainly, I would recommend to all of our neighbors, you know, as we've discussed several times today, there will be opportunities with the, with, with the bond and other public improvements to try to make improvements to this street. And I would strongly encourage you to reach out to your City Council person as that process moves forward, because that's the best way to have those, those concerns about the, the road and getting it improved addressed.
All right, thank you.
At this point, any, anything else? How about the turn lanes? Do you want to address that?
So, I mean, whatever Public Works tells us we've got to do, we've got to do. Of course, we'll be submitting building permits, which will require us to pay impact fees. The impact fees can go to capacity-related issues on the network. So, when the city made the determination with the impact fee ordinance to take away traffic studies, they decided they were going to make global studies and come up with requirements. So, there's also the Bond Project that's coming up sooner than, than later, so as proposed is what we would put forward to the commission.
Okay. Barry, do you want to tell us about what, how that determination is made, and give us any advice to our neighbors about ways they might have their concerns around traffic addressed?
Barry Lodge, Public Works. So, again, with the, with the Bond Projects, that is, where we in Public Works will put those on a list that is then determined whether it actually gets placed on the election by City Council members. So, that would be the, not to try to sic all of the residents on their City Council person, I don't want to do that, but they are going to be the ones making the decision on that. I did check on this one to see, I, I thought I had reviewed a project along Sarah Road. I think it was a mile south of here, though, that was under design. I think it was a mile south of here, though, that was under design. My not, to my knowledge right now, there's not anything planned for this particular mile, that, that it would have to be a future bond election project. As far as along Sarah Road and going into their, the entrances to the development, they would be required to offset the curbs of their roads going in, into the development to a two-lane with dimension from that section line. So they would be required, just at, at the limits of the, the two entrances, to provide an A-cell, D-cell lane. That's gonna be about 100 feet length on each side.
Okay.
So they would be required to do that, just because of the, of the widening required to get to that, the two lanes on that side of the road. They would not be required to do improvements beyond that on Sarah Road.
Gotcha, well, that's at least comforting, to know there's gonna be something.
And in, in terms of density in, in, in streets, as the commission knows, where areas of the city start to see a bunch of new developments, which you can see 1883, 1920, those are the areas that get put on bond project lists. So worth noting that 1883, if you look at the size of those lots, my belief is those are actually greater density than what we propose, and that is directly abutting the neighborhood to the west.
Any other questions from commissioners? I think we're ready for a motion. Commissioner Claire?
I had several comments, but they've all been addressed by staff or otherwise. So I'm ready to make a motion to approve item C 7627.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C, oh, and eliminating TE3, is that a quick motion?
I'm sorry, subject to technical evaluation, my understanding, we don't need to eliminate TE3. It is, it states street stuffs are required.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need the variance, so it's just.
Cool.
So subject to technical evaluations?
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C 7627, subject to the technical evaluations. That motion's seconded by, do we have a second? Seconded by Commissioner Noble, oop, it keeps changing, Commissioner La Forge, apparently. Please cast your votes. I don't know how that, how did that work? All right. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 21.
Item 21 is C 7628, final plat of Bluegrass Meadows, located south of West Hefner Road and east of, or Road.
The item is C 7628, it is the exact same item, so we're, we're back at a final plat. I think the discussion for us is, is there any merit to having the, is there any issue with having the preliminary and final on the same, in the same meeting?
To me, no, there were no changes between, you know, if, if we would've asked for significant changes, would've wanted to see it again, but no, I don't see any issue with it.
Okay. Any other questions? We do, technically, everyone who signed up for 20 can be heard again on 21, if they're wanting to be heard again on 21. Okay. Then we're looking for a motion.
Move to approve item C 7628, subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve of C 7628. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge?
I don't see anything.
Oh, seconded by Commissioner Meek, please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our items requiring a separate vote. Are there any additional items? There are no additional items, we're in line for communications and reports from planning commission committees. Are there any reports from planning commission committees? Planning commission members, Commissioner Claire?
I think we've just witnessed another instance today where we, we understand that there's gotta be some improvement on noticing. And so I, I know it's been kicked around a little bit about creating a committee to kind of pursue that, and I would be, be happy to be a part of that.
I, Senator Thompson and I have talked before about her effort to, to, to get legislation passed about that. So perhaps, Commissioner Claire, we could visit with her, you might visit with her. She's been open to doing that, I don't, I don't know the current status of that, I don't, I, but obviously, we'd be, you know, that'd be our own actions as private individuals in support of those policies that might improve the notice requirement, but I'm certainly open to it, I hate that outcome for them.
Yeah, same, I agree.
Anything else, Commissioner Claire?
No.
Commissioner Meek?
I agree, I believe the signposting requirement would be number one, would took out, you know, everyone that drives by, every little town around this metro has that requirement. How Oklahoma City doesn't baffles me. I don't think, I don't think it should take a committee, I, I would ask Mr. Butler if he knows the process, if, how it could be changed. Is it?
Yeah, I thought we sent some information to commissioners, didn't we, fairly recently?
We do, it, it comes up occasionally, and we've sent a memo that was done, I want to say five years ago or so, that kind of, we can resend that, there, there are some concerns, but there are, there are pros and cons.
It's not a city issue, it's a, what commissioners are you speaking?
No, the city could do it, the city, the council could require it.
Council could require, council could change the noticing requirements as well. So, you know, we.
We might need a bigger room, if, I mean, but.
So on that, I'll say, and Jeff, I remember getting it, I thought I even got it twice since I've been on this commission. You may have to put it like on your annual sendout, because those new commissioners come on, I was right there with you, and I'm still, it seems like we need the signs. But he's got a good memo with pros and cons. The biggest one is what you just said, it won't just be full, these meetings will last really long. I looked and saw I only have one year left on this term, I'll be gone. You guys will be doing these, these will be eight to 15-hour meetings, you might be rolling into day two. It proves that they're extremely effective. This city is so big, though, that if they're 100% effective, that's good, but it will be a lot of people. I don't even know if that's in your memo, just, because it sounds bad to say, oh, well then too many people will know about it. No, you want everybody to know, but careful what you ask for, I'll be gone.
Right, I, I was, I have voicemails, and I was contacted twice this week over people that live complete, immediately adjacent to the Ample Theater that didn't get notice, that are still calling me. And it's just on cases like that, you know.
I really think, and I, I really think people throw notices away. They have to, the way that they get mailed, we have proof of who got it mailed, aren't they supposed to be certified mailed? Like, I mean.
They're not certified, no.
But a simple sign could.
But, but I think you're right, that people may throw them away. When they say they didn't get them, I'm like, surely we sent them out, like the city would send them out. The other thing is, we don't send them to, do we send them to people in a different city? If we're on the border of War Acres, do we send them to the people in War Acres?
I believe we do.
Okay.
Sarah, that's correct, it doesn't matter what city they live in.
It's a state law.
Regardless of the city boundaries, they get notice, whether they're in Yukon or whatever, if they're within 300 feet.
We notice everybody within 300 feet, and if there are not, at least 10 individual property owners, we, the applicant's required to go out in 100-foot increments until they have at least 10. That's for zoning. Now, plating is not as, at a 300-foot radius, so to Jared's point, what he was just discussing is, this zoning case, this last one, was you all, you all heard it for recommendation in November, and I just pulled the notice list, because I wanted to be sure that it was all correct, and that some of the, and, and it was. There were 15 addresses within 300 feet. The plat has a, only 100-foot radius, correct? 100. But they, but they came.
So that plat, 19, or no, the PUD got 300, the plat gets 100.
Went out to.
Yeah.
Yes.
Went out to a wider, the PUD went out to a wider area, and we got none, and the plat was.
But, but y'all don't exclude somebody just because they're in a different city limits.
And, and there wasn't none.
Right, they still get it, even if they're in a different city limit.
We did have a, the applicant, I remembered one of the ladies that was here on the PUD.
And I would, I would clarify that, that if you go out that additional 100 feet and, and you have 40 people, you have to send it to all 40.
Oh, wow.
So we don't just send it to 10. If we get extra people in that extra radius, then we have to send it to all of them.
How is it measured? Is it measured, do you, is it a point in the middle? Is it from the entire perimeter property line, and you take that distance around? So if it's a big square property, you're tracing them, it's, it's not a circle.
Okay.
Yes, that makes sense. The thing, the only thing I was gonna add was just, there is a major disparity between rural subdivision developments and more urban sites with a lot more popu, dense populated areas. So the one rule for both doesn't seem to be working as well, because we don't want to.
I agree.
That was the issue with some draft language I've seen on amending this, is like, this makes sense, but it makes sense for the, the more rural subdivisions. We don't want to have to notice 1,000 people in the middle of Oklahoma City for, for a spud, but there's gotta be a way to tailor that.
Yeah.
And I agree with that. Commissioner Meek and I have had several conversations, you know, both of our wards have a lot of rural areas, and, I mean, there is a subdivision that was going to be built to the south of me, but I was just outside of it, I didn't know anything about it. We're on acreages, we don't have homeowners associations, and so it's kind of word of mouth, and who knows who.
But a sign could fix it.
And I'm talking to who, so.
True.
Yep. I, I don't know, there's, I have received some for other things and read them, and didn't respond to them, because I wasn't concerned, but.
These kind folks just very be glad they weren't 30-foot lots.
Commissioner Newman, or Commissioner Meek, did you have anything else? Commissioner Newman?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Gobean? Commissioner Noble? Commissioner La Forge? I'll continue to say that I think we need to all be reminded of the Oklahoma standard and the way that we treat each other and behave in these meetings. I think it is unfortunate that at times, people get really passionate, and I understand your home is personal, nothing more personal than what happens at home. But our respect for each other has to be the basis of everything that we do. If we're gonna exist as a city, as a democracy, it's critical. So I'm disappointed whenever I see people's decorum fall apart in meetings like this. It's a hard balance for me to find of, if I antagonize an angry person, how much more antagonize am I gonna get back? And so sometimes it's better to just let it lay where it is and, and move on. But I, I would encourage you in your community meetings to remind people to check your mail. Like, I say it at every community meeting I go to, check your mail, like, don't throw anything away. If it's from the city of Oklahoma City, just check your mail. So you can avoid this issue, and spread the word with your neighbors, because I think people are getting these notices. I think people are ignoring them. Several years ago, this has to be five years ago, maybe even six years ago, in my first year on the commission, we had a study session, it might've been, uh, before you were even planning director, it might've been Aubrey, we had a planning, we had a study session about the wording for notice. Do you remember that, were you?
Oh, no, that was, that was prior.
Okay. And do you all, do you, do you recall this? Okay, we, we did do this, we had a whole review about it, we had a review about the notice, we, we did all of that.
I think I know where you're going, we had a study session to discuss notices, because there was a potential proposal that when we send out a notice, we include the entire, all the uses, or for PUDs and SPODs.
Yes, that was it.
And what we, and what we have done, and what we continue to do, is we post all of the PUD and SPOD master design statements as submitted at the application time. We post those on our website, and when we mail out a, when we mail the notices to everyone, we include that link on their notice. So for PUDs and SPUDs, anybody can go to okc.gov/districts and click on SPUDs or PUDs, and you can see all of the PUDs and SPUDs that are somewhere in the process right now, starting when we mail the first notice to Planning Commission. After, after Planning Commission, we then go to City Council, and once the item is introduced at City Council, we mail another notice on zoning applications, and we direct people then to our Prime Gov site. So they can, again, read not only what's proposed in the PUD or SPOD, but what this commission did with that application and what was suggested.
That's great.
Which includes staff reports, right?
Which includes staff reports and a memo showing the minutes and all of the TEs that you did, and then the applicant makes the changes that you suggest prior to us moving it onto City Council, so that City Council is voting on what you recommended.
Recommended and included in that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's great. But that's important for people, I think, to keep in mind, is that, that those resources are available, but it's, it's really, we, it's not an easy job here, so. You know, people think we get paid? Now, I'm always like, no, I get, we get yelled at for free.
That's a great value for them.
Right? Right. Planning Department?
I did wanted to mention that we just, the council just adopted our straightforward and massively simple and user-friendly sign code. So we're looking forward to starting to use that. We also have a, March 14th, we're looking forward to a, I guess it's not technically a study session, it is a development regulations committee, but all are invited, all the planning commission members are invited. So please mark your calendars for that, we'll be discussing our proposed accessory dwellings ordinance. Yes, we will send out, have we sent out, you know, Sarah, have we sent out an email yet? Okay, we will do that. And then finally, I wanted to introduce Ben Davis, who is our, a new senior planner, he's taken Curtis's place, so he'll be working on PUDs and SPUDs mainly, I believe.
And those are always very easy.
Yes, yeah.
So, Ben, welcome.
That's what we've been telling him.
Totally lacking in con, well, good, we look forward to working with you. As you can see, you get all the fun cases, so it'll be great. All right, municipal councillor's office. You're not gonna grace us with any further wisdom, huh? All right. Citizens to be heard, seeing as we've reached the end of our agenda, we are adjourned.